Good day to everyone. Welcome to the 181st meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Internet Society. This is also the annual general meeting for 2024, which is why you're hearing from me. I'm Andrew Sullivan, I'm president and CEO. And for the beginning of this meeting, I get to be chair because we don't have a chair. Our first order of business will be to elect a chair. But before we do that, I think it would be nice if we started at the end and went around to say, you know, to give quick introductions, just say hello.
Rhonda Silva, just hello, no, just kidding. Long time I saw individual member and recently helping co-lead the DC chapter.
Hi, Lauren Levine, General Counsel of Internet Society and Foundation.
Brian Haberman, board member.
Ramon Biau, board member appointed by chapter last year.
Kathleen Moriarty, incoming board member.
Maureen Hillard, incoming board member.
Russ Houseley, incoming board member.
Barry Leba noting that we put all three of the incoming people together over here.
Ted Hardy, trustee.
I'm Andrew, I already introduced myself.
Sally Wentworth, managing director of the Internet Society and incoming CEO.
Charles Mark, trustee.
Arua, trustee.
Chris Look, incoming managing director of the ISOC Foundation.
Victor Korsing, current trustee.
Sarah Armstrong, executive director of the Internet Society Foundation.
Say Park, CFO for Internet Society and ISOC Foundation.
Luis Martinez, former trustee.
Caleb Gondelé, current trustee.
I now need to, we don't have any apologies, right? Everybody's here. Oh, Sagurika is missing, that's right.
She was here this morning at breakfast.
So, all right, at the moment, we have apologies from Sagurika. And now I have to call for any conflicts of interest. Seeing none. We have some folks online who are observing. This is an open to observers session. During this period, we will be coming and going because there will be closing during the deliberations for the various voting and so on. So those of you who will not be staying for for those things, you know, you will get some some exercise this morning in standing and sitting. All right, so with that, we will call the this first order of business, the annual election of the board chair. I understand that Ted Hardy has offered his name as a possible board chair. Are you still willing to do that?
I am.
Is there anybody else who is among the eligible candidates who would like to put their name forward as board chair? Seeing none, this is the time where you all get some exercise. Those who are not voting members of the Internet Society or rather of the of the board. And the candidate should please. Ah, yes, Sagurika, do you want to stand for chair?
Do you want to run for chair? Oh, your God.
That's the answer.
Apparently not. All right, welcome back to the open to observer session. We will now take, we will now perform the voting for the position of the board chair. There is only one candidate, which is Ted Hardy. Ted has received some feedback from from the other trustees. We're now going to open the voting in board effect. And Lauren is the magic holder of how this works, so I'm going to hand the floor to her.
Trustees, you should all have a link to vote in the Slack general channel. That's the quickest way to access it. You can also go in through board effect. Click on workroom, board of trustees, collaborate, and you should see the election for ISOC board chair AGM 2024. We're still waiting on two folks. Yeah, we can give you more time. Votes have been received.
All right, will you tell us the result, please?
So the result for the ISOC board chair is 11 in favor of Ted Hardy, two abstains.
Ted, congratulations, you are the Chair of the Internet Society Board of Trustees, and I now cheerfully hand the chair to you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the confidence of the board. The next order of business is to elect the other officers, the first of which is treasurer. I know of one candidate, that would be Laura. Laura, are you still willing to serve?
Yes.
Are there any other trustees who wish to stand as treasurer? Seeing none, we will do the same thing as before. Those who are not trustees are asked to vacate the room. Laura, as candidate, will vacate the room, will have a discussion, and then come back and use the same process to vote again. Thanks, everyone. On behalf of the board, I would like to share the feedback from the board, which was that your working methods have been judged to be very diligent and organized. And they thank you very much for the service over the past year. With that, I believe we're ready to vote on this matter. Lauren, is it a similar survey, or have you placed the link in the same place?
Similar process, link is placed in the general Slack channel. You can also access the survey via the same file path as you did for the chair vote. We're still waiting on two votes. And all the votes are in.
May I ask you to announce the results?
The result of the vote for the ISOC board treasurer is 13 in favor of Laura Thompson, zero abstains.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So the next position is actually optional. There is a board secretary, which is something the board may appoint and has appointed over the past few years. But I wanted to remind folks that the only thing the board secretary does is serve on the executive committee. And the executive committee has historically not met. Last year was quite exceptional, and the executive committee did in fact meet and take on a role related to the CEO succession. But its report at the end of that was that it recommended that it continue to be used very sparingly. So the secretary position is one the board may appoint. So before we go to the selection, I want to reconfirm the sense of the board that it wishes to appoint a secretary. Does anybody have comments on this point?
I think it's a good thing, and we would like to support that we reappoint a secretary.
Okay. Any other comments on this point? Does anyone oppose us selecting secretary? Okay, so it looks like we will go forward with the appointment of the secretary. I know of one candidate, that's Victor Korsing. Victor, are you willing to stand again? Okay, are there any other candidates? Seeing none, Victor may ask you and the non-voting folks present to leave the room. Thanks, everyone, thanks very much, everyone. Victor, the feedback from the trustees was to thank you for your service and to compliment you on your success over the past year in the role. At this point, I believe we're ready to vote.
The vote for the secretary is in the general Slack channel. We're still waiting on two votes. Let me know if you need assistance. All the votes are in.
Thank you very much. Would you give us the result of the vote?
Yes, so the vote for ISOC board secretary, 12 in favor of Victor, one abstain.
Thank you again for offering your service, Victor. The next item of business is the annual appointment of committee chairs and members. There is a resolution which has been available in board effect. There is one change to this. The audit committee chair was pending a discussion between Victor and Sagurika, and Sagurika will be serving as audit committee chair if the board approves this resolution.
Will Victor be a member of the committee or not?
Yes, I can still be a member of the committee.
Okay, so there are two changes then. Sagurika will be listed as a chair and Victor will be added as a member.
We're making the change right now.
Thank you.
The resolution will be up on the screen shortly.
Okay, may I ask someone to move the motion, please? Thank you, Laura, and I saw, I saw Brian second a little bit faster than you. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, may I ask all those in favor to signify by raising their hand? Just for Kathleen, we're voting on the committee assignments, which I believe you've already reviewed. Do you have any comments on them? No, okay. Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you very much to everybody who has volunteered to serve on these committees. This is very important work for the board, and thank you very much for your service. The next item of business is to appoint a liaison to the ITF nominations committee. That resolution will appoint Brian Haberman as Internet Society Board Liaison to the ITM nominations committee for the 2024-2025 term. May I ask someone to move the motion? Thank you, Russ, a second, please. Barry, thank you. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, I may ask all those in favor to please signify by raising your hand. Brian, I noticed your hand isn't raised. I just want to make sure you're still willing to do this, right? Okay, with that, I believe it is unanimous, but just to confirm, is, are there any opposed? Caleb, your hand is still up. Okay. And any abstain? I didn't see anyone, but because it sometimes. Okay, the resolution passes. The next is the appointment of a trustee to the ITF trust. The resolution reads, resolve that the Internet Society Board of Trustees appoints Victor Korsing as trustee of the ITF trust for a term of two years. May I ask someone to move the motion? Thank you, Kathleen, and Russ, second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, I propose we do this one by acclamation, just to change things up. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item of business is to receive, to accept the summary of agreed board action items from the 2023-2024 Board of Trustees. As a reminder, because the board is reconstituted after the last board meeting of the previous board and the AGM, this is the mechanism by which the previous board sends forward its ideas to this board about what the priorities and action items that it believes important should be. This does not mean that this board is bound by them, but this step ensures that we record that they have been accepted by the incoming board and acknowledged as having been received from the prior board. So the proposed resolution says, resolve that the Internet Society Board of Trustees accepts the summary of agreed board action items as conveyed by the 2023-2024 Board of Trustees. And those read, continue to focus on revenue diversification and support ISOC's fundraising efforts through the foundation. Prioritize succession planning and activities. Support ongoing efforts to improve the accessibility of ISOC materials and communities. Ensure that additional training is made available to trustees, taking on specialized financial or other duties if needed. The governance committee shall consider mechanisms to increase transparency in committee activities. Support the Internet Society's communication strategy in the development of its unique brand. And support the Internet Society's efforts to maintain a culture of diversity and inclusion. May I ask someone to move the motion? Thank you, Caleb, and I saw Brian as a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That appears to be unanimous, thanks very much, everyone. The next item of business is always bittersweet, because it is the recognition of outgoing trustees. The bare resolution before you is resolved that the Internet Society Board of Trustees thanks Luis Martinez, Robert Pepper, and John Peterson, who have concluded their terms, for their dedication and outstanding service to the Internet Society as members of the Board of Trustees. Before we consider it as a formal motion, I simply want to say that I have personally enjoyed working with John Pepper and Luis. I feel that each has dedicated themselves to the mission and to their interactions with the rest of the board. And although it is always a pleasure to welcome incoming members, it is always difficult to say goodbye to those with whom we have served. So I add my personal thanks to each one of them for the time we've had together on the board. For the resolution, may I ask someone to move the motion? Caleb and Brian?
Before you move the motion, may I just request that outside the thanks, we give them maybe our own applause, just to give them some form of encouragement.
We'll do that just now. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I ask the board to join me in passing this by acclamation? Okay, the, oh, okay.
Just to say that, put something in the agenda before. I wanted to know when you said discussion, is this where we talk about, I had some comments about outgoing incoming board, or we wait for the AOB session? Just wanted to know.
I think the AOB session is where that's going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Did, did you, if you had a moment where you wanted to to thank the outgoing board members, you could also do that now. you could also do that now, if you wanted to focus on the outgoing board members.
And Pepper and John, I don't think the rest of them are here, but just to say really thank you. It's been an experience and a half working with you all, and please don't be strangers. It would be nice to hear from you, probably your sounding boards, to some things we want to talk about that can be open, of course. But thank you for your service and hope our paths cross in the future. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we are probably ready to move on from that. The next item is the resolution to approve the dates and locations for the 2024-2025 board meetings. Resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the following dates for its meetings. Obviously, here, we can't quite approve this yet, because there are no dates and locations in, in the, in there. I believe we have a proposal, however. This is a proposal to fill in those dates and, and location. And so before we take the formal I'm sorry, couldn't hear you. Yeah, so let, let's take these, and then we'll, we'll, we'll go to the retreat, because that has a location issue as well.
Yesterday, there was some material up that had the following weekend. Is it the second, third, or the following weekend? Just to confirm, because on one of the slides yesterday, it said the ninth.
Okay, so the proposal that we're considering today would be for the second and third, although there was actually a suggestion to make it the first and the second. So there, there does need to be some discussion of this point. And the issue is partly that because there are members of the board who also attend ICANN, which begins on the ninth, that it is difficult to do it in the weekend after the IETF, and therefore needs to be done beforehand. So if, if we are focused on co-locating with the IETF for the Q4 board meeting, the question then is, can we do the first and second? Now, if, if you're not attending the IETF but are attending ICANN, that's going to be a little bit awkward, because you're going to be in Dublin for the first and second, and then you'll need to have a week before going to Istanbul. And so that may be problematic for, for folks, and we need to have a bit of a discussion here before we finalize that. So I guess the first question is, is there anybody who would have difficulty with the dates for the first and second of November? Laura? Can't be there on the first, okay. And, and Barry, you were, you were proposing the first and second, because you had a conflict on the third. Is it a hard?
Oh, right, because the, there is IETF stuff going on on Sunday, on the, on the third. I can skip that if I have to. I would prefer not to, but if Laura can't be there on the first, then, yeah.
Okay. So it sounds like then if we're back to looking at the second and third of November, is there anybody who can't make it on those dates? Now, again, that, that's the current proposal. Caleb?
Yeah. Do we have to decide on this right now?
So I think historically, it's been very important to decide on the dates as soon as possible. The placement is obviously something that we, we have, for example, taken something virtual during the pandemic or something similar, but it is very, very useful to at least decide the dates, so people can lock those into calendars, even if we can't decide on the placement. So I think that's, that's sort of job one. And the reason for these dates is to co-locate with the IETF, so it would be handy if we can agree to the whole package. But if you have an objection, please let us know what it is.
No, I, I don't have an objection. It's just that it's back-to-back travels.
Yeah. Yeah, very much understood. Any other comments on the Q4 board meeting?
Was there an indication that the, the weekend after will be better for the ICANN folks, or is it worse? Impossible. Okay, that was, that was the question. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately, ICANN tends to have meetings on the weekend before and the weekend after for many groups and so.
Yeah, we could do it in Istanbul after ICANN, but not in between the two. There's, there's no time in between the two.
Can't do it after.
Can't do it after, because it's too late.
If you do it that late, it's very, very bad for those.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the, the action plans, et cetera, are approved at this, the later it goes, the harder it is, so.
So, yeah, I will make two, three November work.
All right, is there anybody who cannot make two, three November work? Okay, so Lauren, can you update the, the, the actual resolution for the second and third of November? So for the Q1 board meeting, the proposal is Seattle, Oregon, linked to the ICANN Community Forum. That is.
Did somebody move Seattle to Oregon without my knowing?
Seattle, Washington. There's so many places called Seattle. There probably is a Seattle, Oregon. That's a very good catch. Thank you. Seattle, Washington. Living so far away these days, all the states bleed together in my mind. The, the question there is, would we want to be able to do this before the community forum, on the eighth to ninth, or after on the fifteenth and sixteenth? Discussion? Kathleen?
I don't have the school calendar yet.
Oh, okay. So when do you expect to get that?
The, well, my son switched school, is switching schools, so I've messaged to the administration.
Okay, so my guess is we, we should probably then pick one of these, but understand that it may change.
I'll just point out that the IETF in Bangkok is right after the ICANN Seattle meeting.
Yeah, so getting to Bangkok after fifteenth and sixteenth would be problematic. So would the eighth to ninth of March, at least tentative based on Kathleen's potential block there, be okay as the, oh, okay, can't.
So eight to nine doesn't work for me. I prefer fifteen to sixteen, but I'll also wait to see what the general vote is, what the dates. But for now, I would favor fifteen to sixteen.
Okay. So the other option here, other than the, the Seattle ICANN Community Forum, would be March in Bangkok, or we can simply have the meeting online, right? We have done that in the past. The first board meeting of the year tends to be fairly light. So another option would be to do it online. So that, that frees us up from a schedule perspective, because nobody has to fly there, but it does mean that we would still have to avoid these conflicts with the ICANN Community Forum and the IETF. So let me take the temperature of the room for Q1 online. Any objection? Caleb?
So usually for me, I, I, I strongly prefer that fiscal meetings allows us to connect due to human bonds and less friction on the board, right? These things are very important for us to move forward as a board, given some of few past issues. So may I propose that we have it earlier, if it's going to clash with the, the IETF, given that most of the folks that are going for the IETF are also US folk-based, so they can, not American folk-based, and so they can, you know, manage it through and see what can happen. So that's, that's, that's my own thought.
Kathleen, you had your hand up?
Oh, I thought it was to weigh in on virtual. I mean, virtual would eliminate my questions, right, because I don't have a schedule yet.
Charles, did you have a?
We discussing the date or the location, because I think if we all have to go to Bangkok, and none of us is actually in that area, that doesn't really make a lot of sense. So I'm just commenting on the date and, and, well, actually, the location. It seems like Seattle would be much, makes much more sense.
Unfortunately, it looks like the Seattle has a problem, because the fifteenth and sixteenth would necessarily be travel days for anybody going to Bangkok, and the eighth and ninth, Funkei can't be there. So if we held it here in the DC area rather than in Seattle, that would probably allow people to get to the community forum relatively rapidly, because they would already be in the US. And it would still be close to New York. Would that make it possible?
I'm not sure I'll be in New York. I could be asked to go anywhere in the world with different locations.
Okay. Laura?
Does it work for you if it was on Zoom, or is it the actual day is going to be busy?
Okay, so unfortunately, if we, if we eliminate all of March, it's going to be very difficult. Yeah, okay, so that, that day in particular would be the worst of these.
Charles has something to say?
Oh, oh, I, I just wonder if.
You're, you're not on mic.
Yeah, if we are doing it in Washington area, then if any of, any of us might, I don't know, if any of us may have to be at ICANN, then that might also present a little bit of a problem.
Yeah, I think we would have to change the dates in order to allow the travel to the community forum if we did it here. So Barry?
I'm, I'm confused, because the, my calendar says the ICANN meeting starts on the eighth. So the dates of our meeting would have to be the sixth and seventh.
But I think that was, would that resolve things for you? Okay. So sixth or seventh is the date, Seattle for those who are not remote and potentially remote, if, if. All right. Okay, sixth and seventh of March. Seattle. All right. All right, thank you for pointing that out, Barry. That definitely helped us get to a resolution there.
Yeah.
And the next one is the annual general meeting for 2025. And the proposal there is the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh of July in Madrid. And another option would be the ICANN Policy Forum, which is the ninth, well, so it would be before or after the ICANN Policy Forum. Unfortunately, the location there was to be determined. Has it been determined?
It, it has not been announced yet.
Okay, and obviously it's.
I said, I, well, I heard a rumor that it was going to be Prague, but it wasn't. Okay, so it's, I'm wrong.
So there are two options then. One would be earlier, obviously, in June, similar to this year, related to the ICANN Policy Forum, either in the beginning or the end in Prague, and the other would be Madrid in July. Any thoughts? Victor?
Is, is there a consequence of pushing it back to July, other than, I mean, I know it's four weeks. I, I get the time delta. Is there any difficulty we have if we were to move the AGM back? Is this a whole month difference?
The, the, it means this board would stay the Board of the Internet Society Trustees for an additional month, and the next board would take over a month later. That's the difference.
The, the only really tight piece there is if you hold it before the policy forum, so prior to nine June, you've got a fairly short onboarding period between the elections and, and, and seating the board, but that's the only, that's the only constraint.
That's the concern if we move it to early in June.
Yeah.
Early in June.
Yeah.
Right, but we could do it after the policy forum.
Yeah.
That would be my preference, I suppose.
Okay.
And they have confirmed it to be in Prague. I think, yeah.
Okay, fun cable.
Sorry to, to bring us back to the match thing. I know we said sixth and seventh, but that just, that gives me eight as travel dates. So I was wondering, can we move it to fifth and sixth? Because if sixth and seventh, we're going to be here all through six, I've been seven, so I'll be traveling on the eighth. That's still defeats for me. Any chance we can move it to fifth and sixth?
Thoughts from the board?
Works for me.
Did we just switch which ones we're talking about?
Yeah, she has to go back.
Just to go back to.
See if it could be the fifth and sixth.
Fifteen and sixteen instead of six and seven.
Of March.
March.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, again, I don't, don't do it around me, but pushing things in the middle of the week is really, really hard for folks who have barely taxing jobs.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay. Kathleen?
So, I mean, virtual would be okay for me, but I respect, you know, what Victor is bringing up as a point as well.
So if we did sixth and seventh, there's a stronger possibility that you would have to be virtual, because you would not have the time to do a travel debt. Right? Okay. Okay, I think, let's leave it at sixth and seventh, and cross our fingers that the, the travel doesn't cause too much trouble. So back to the AGM for this, may I just do a quick straw poll on June versus July? If you favor June, just raise your hands.
So that would be June thirteen and fourteen.
Yeah, June thirteen. There are like three people who favor it. If you favor July, could you raise your hands? Okay, it sounds like people didn't hear. Let's try that again. If you favor June, which would be the after the ICANN Policy, oh, you have a question? Yeah.
Yes, so just a clarification, are we co-locating any events with the July meeting?
The July meeting, it would be co-located with the IETF in Madrid.
IETF?
Yes.
Okay, so in my view, I just feel that, hey, there is a concession for the folks coming from the ICANN community to have something for the March meeting. Why don't we also try and concede a little bit?
So I'm afraid when you turn to face the screen, you move away from the microphone and we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, so I was trying to look at the, now, I'm, I'm thinking that for the March meeting, we've conceded for those, those who will be attending the ICANN meeting and all of that. Why don't you try and also be flexible and concede to those who will be participating in the IETF meeting that is co-located? And the reason also is to cut down the cost. Especially folks who will be traveling for IETF, maybe they can, you know, at the end of the IETF meeting, also attend the AGM. On the other hand, I do not see any reason legally that says that the, maybe, Ilona, my advice, that says, within the bylaw, that says that the AGM cannot hold in July as well, right?
So it can be in July. So just, just to be clear, we're doing the Q4 associated with the IETF, Q1 associated with ICANN, and so we, we will be meeting with each of them once. So if we are choosing the AGM to be associated with one or the other, we're, we're we're going to be going for two, two to one, no, no matter what, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, let me go back to the straw poll. If you, if you favor June, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Seattle, sorry, Prague.
Thirteen and fourteen, June in Prague, or twenty-six, twenty-seven, July in Madrid?
If you favor Madrid in July, please raise your hand now. Okay, there's a lot of people who don't seem to care. Is there, just in order to keep the this moving, I propose that we do the, the Policy Forum in Prague at the end. That would mean that we're doing it a little bit earlier, more in, in keeping with this timing than a month later. And, and that we take the resolution in that direction. And we can always adjust this later in the year if we need to, but that at least sets a, a plan in place for us to, to move forward with it. Is that okay?
Would be fourteen, fifteen, probably. So it's usually weekends.
Yes, you heard. Yeah. No. Is that okay? It would, yeah, it would be. It would, yeah, it would be the same. They're both Schengen, so.
So you might probably not understand what she's saying. I'm Nigerian, she's a Nigerian, and we both carry Nigerian passports. It's usually difficult for us to get Schengen visas.
Okay, so you would have.
But then that means we need to, meaning that if we we need to apply way ahead and all of that, so that's.
Okay, so you would prefer the later one to give you more time to apply?
No. For me, I it's I can I can try and figure out my way, right? But my visa is expiring even before the Ireland meeting, so it's that means I have to apply again. Yeah, to Nigerians, they don't give.
Yeah.
If you say you're going for two days, they'll give you five days, maybe, max.
Okay, unfortunately, Ireland is not in Schengen because it has to be in the CTA. As a result of which, getting a visa for Ireland will not result in you holding a visa for either Prague or Madrid. Right? So there'll be separate processes. Russ?
So no matter what, I cannot do the 26th because of July. The IEEE 802 is meeting back to back with the ITF. The 26th is the day of the leadership meeting that I am chairing.
Okay, so, okay, that I think that clarifies that. So let's let's focus on putting up, again, we can adjust this later if we need to, this to be the second half of June associated with the Prague ICANN Policy Forum. Kathleen?
Is is the other weekend possible for the ITF? For me, it adds a trip, and so for childcare, that's five hundred to a thousand dollars more personally.
So you want to do it before the before the ITF?
Which would be nineteen twenty, I cannot.
Okay, so.
So but I'll say the same thing again, that I would prefer that it be Friday, Saturday, rather than Saturday, Sunday.
And Laura can't make it the weekend before, so. Okay. All right. This this. All right, so I think for the purposes of the resolution, again, knowing that as people develop new information, we can we can carry that forward. The the ICANN Policy Forum ending weekend, which would be the 13th, 14th of June, is our target in Prague. Okay? All right. Now, to the retreat, I believe we have a so several people were going to talk to their companies about their preferences around this, because I believe some people had restrictions from their company on travel. Are there any updates that the trustees wish to make on this point, Laura?
Can't go to Uganda.
You can't go to Uganda. Okay, so that would that would be at least two of us who cannot go to Uganda. Brian? Okay, Brian cannot. So with three people who cannot go to Uganda, I think we're then choosing between Nairobi and Harare. Sarah, can you remind us what dates we're talking about here?
Yeah, we had talked about the second weekend in September. I think the dates turn out to be thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Okay.
I am completely unavailable even remotely those days.
Okay. Yeah, as I recall, your September is very difficult, right?
Right, I can I can I can do remotely the week, starting on the sixteenth for that week, but not before the sixteenth.
Challenging.
Yeah, I can be remote. I have I have to be in DC the eighteenth, nineteenth.
Okay. Well, the the dates that Sarah said were thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth. The the date that Barry said was he's not available before the sixteenth, and the date that Kathleen said is she has to be in DC on the eighteenth. What fun. And and Russ has to be in San Jose, but he hasn't given a time, so we don't know when he has to be in San. When do you have to be in San Jose? The eighteen, okay. So let's try and decide on a place, and then we'll keep working on the date. Okay. This is, this is, of course, very difficult because these are long trips for for pretty much starting for for anyone. The amount of time it takes in travel to get there is significant. I think seventeen hours is like the the shortest trip on the books. So we need to be very careful here. From the point of view of the discussions that have been held so far, I believe I heard that Nairobi is sort of the emerging consensus as a preference because the support systems were better established there. And I guess if we're focusing on that, is there anybody who wishes to make a strong argument for Harare instead of Nairobi? Okay, so it sounds like we're we're continuing to focus on Nairobi then. And the question is, can we make this work in a way so we have at least remote attendance from everybody? And we have the opportunity as a board to meet with the grantees, which is the reason we want to hold it in Nairobi, is to give us the opportunity as the foundation board, which is kind of not our role right now, but to do that, but since the the two AGMs are co-located, we need to take it into consideration as this board. Did you want to?
Just one comment. I understand that perhaps this weekend that we just discussed is not going to work, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen for September. Whatever works for everyone, obviously, is what we'll go with. The only thing I would put out there is that we do require a great deal of preparation time in order to get the grantees on board for the things that they would need to do, prepare the site visit, et cetera. So I would just ask that whenever we can make that decision, that would be great, the sooner the better for that reason.
Okay, I think we'll continue to discuss it informally today. And then we'll hopefully be able to resolve it before before we close the meeting out at the at the end of tomorrow.
Thank you.
So from a resolution perspective, I don't think we're quite ready. So I propose we table the resolution and take it up again later in the meeting and continue to have everybody stare at their calendars a little bit longer and try and resolve this as quickly as we can. So I've got a couple of people. Barry, you're first, and then Caleb?
Okay, I'll throw one more date out there that I could do, starting on the 27th of September, I could do remote participation.
Okay, can I ask people to put these dates into the Slack channel as well? Caleb?
Yes, may I suggest, I'm currently going through a merger integration right now, and that means it's busy time for me at work, right? So I would suggest that weekends, anything that we have to do, buying weekends into it allows me to, you know, for some of us, we've existed our vacation for the year. So if you can, whatever we are doing, if it means we're starting on Thursday, ending on Sunday, it's fine. But if you have to do it during the weekdays, please, let's try and avoid it because some of us might have to pay the bills.
Okay, but the the question then is for Thursday, are you also considering that, including the travel? Because the travel back and forth to Nairobi is going to be substantial from Winnipeg.
Yeah, meaning.
Almost a full day.
What I mean is like starting the trip on like a Thursday, right? And arriving in Nairobi probably Friday, starting the meeting and all of that, and wrapping up on Sunday, and then out on Sunday again.
Okay. So.
And so probably I'll would just miss one day from the office, probably Monday or something.
Okay, I think I appreciate everybody trying to work through. This is obviously one of the more difficult things, as we say, there's a lot of busy people.
I apologize, it's Sarah again. I just wanted to make a comment that ideally, if people want to attend a site visit while we are there, that they can stay Monday, the sixteenth of September. If that's the weekend that we chose, but regardless of which weekend we choose, ideally, people could stay an extra day on that Monday, and I apologize for not bringing that up sooner.
Okay. This is this is going to be challenging, you know, obviously, trying to bring us all together, especially someplace so relatively distant from where most of us are based is going to be problematic. It is, however, you know, a part of the community we have not yet had a chance to interact with as a board, and I think it's something we should continue to consider quite carefully. I think we can table this for a moment. And return to it, I'm going to suggest today at two twenty after the year-to-date progress. And we'll we'll take it up again either then or in the closed executive session, depending on what comments people need to make. So given that, why don't we take our break a little bit early? Take a quick break now, and then we'll return for the ISOC DC chapter report. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everybody. My apologies for not actually setting the the time appropriately when I close this. So a bit of a bubble, getting people gathered again. Thanks for returning promptly. Just to let people know, there will be a message coming out soon asking for availability, again, relating to the relief retreat topic. So please, if you if you get such a message, respond to it as quickly as you can so we can make some progress on that topic. And the next item of business is a report from the ISOC DC chapter. Thank you very much for joining us today, and may I ask the two of you to introduce yourself to the board?
Thank you very much for having us. My name is Chelsea Horn. I'm a professor at American University and one of the co-conveners of ISOC DC.
And Rhonda Silva, the other co-convenor, interesting terminology, first of all, I'll start with that. The way the DC chapter is organized, there are specified in our bylaws to conveners, also functionally chairs, so we're basically co-chairing the DC chapter. But let me back up a little bit and just talk about the DC chapter, what's happened over the last couple of years and where we're going and what we're doing. That's sort of what we want to share this morning. So first, thanks for, again, for having us and a number of you are local, so I'm going to begin with some recruiting and say, if you're not a member, not involved in the DC chapter, we strongly encourage you to put your name into the chapter mailing list and join us as we have a variety of events going forward in participation. So the chapter had a bit of a interruption, if you will, and its normal flow of and cadence of work, unfortunately with the passing of John Moore a couple of years ago. And, you know, he was a key component of, and then it was just exasperated further with Dustin Loop, who was sort of in the administrative role for the for the for the chapter. He moved back to the West Coast and kind of left that combination left the chapter in limbo and last fall, a bunch of caring, interested members of the chapter decided, let's quickly convene an emergency board. And with the sole purpose of ensuring we have, you know, a new board put in place. So we had an election at the beginning of the year, established a new leadership team to move the chapter forward, and and that's really the work of what we're doing now is how do we resuscitate what happened to the chapter over the last couple of years and get it more prominent in our community here in the DC area and figure out what the identity of the chapter should be? How do we align that with purpose and mission of ISOC in general? And and then uniquely, you know, what can we do that, you know, takes advantage of our proximity in particular to DC and legislators and policy work and everything else that's happening in this part of the world? Our chapter is sort of uniquely connected there and based here, so how do we combine all that together? So that's one thing we're working on. But before we jump into the forward, let me turn over to Chelsea and let her kind of share some of the structure of what we've done so far.
Yes, thanks, Ron. So I just want to emphasize how quickly we've been turning things around. So in November of last year, we had that emergency election. We had that temporary council put into place. The election for the formal council happened in February. So we did a very, very quick turnaround with that emergency council. Then with the elections held in February, we had this new council that was also stated on February thirteenth. So we have currently six members of the council, Ron and myself, Mike Nelson, who's the secretary, Mike Godwin, Stephen Williams, and Zainab Karaki. Our other officers right now are John Conrad, who's the treasurer, Judith Heatherstein, who is the chapter advisory council representative, and Jolly McPhee, who's our acting administrator. I also want to just mention immense thanks I have to Jolly and for all of his help because he's been absolutely instrumental in helping us revitalize the chapter, helping us put together events, coordinating live streaming. He's been absolutely incredible and a huge support for us.
Okay, so recruiting again. If you're local, definitely need to join our chapter. And also, we need, so that's six of seven seats identified. We have an open seat on our board still, and we're looking for somebody who's qualified, interested, and willing to jump in and help us. So look for a formal message coming out seeking expressions of interest, but you're hearing it from us firsthand. Feel free to reach out to either one of us if you know somebody that is available and could help fill that last seat.
We've also been working very hard. We've been doing monthly meetings in addition to, I can't even imagine how many emails. I'm sure you guys get a lot of emails as well, too, but my inbox is just flooded with ISOC at the moment. I wouldn't have it any other way, but we've been working really, really diligently to put together new programming and make sure we are we're moving along. Hopefully, we're going to switch back to quarterly meetings in the near future, but it's been very intense. So in terms of events and activities that we put forward, on February thirteenth, we had our annual general meeting. We did it in collaboration with an expert panel at American University, which is where I work as well. I just want to emphasize some of the people who contributed because it made it, that's the big reason why it was so successful. So Natalie Campbell, I'm sure you all know, the senior director of the North American Government Regulatory Affairs from the Internet Society, was one of our panelists. So was Dr. Aram Sinraik, who's professor and chair of the Communication Studies Division at AU, and Dr. Joseph Lorenzo Hall, who's a distinguished technologist for the Strong Internet at the Internet Society. So those constituted our expert panelists, and it was also livestreamed and is available on archived livestream, I don't know what it's called technically, for viewing. The next event that we put forward, it'll be sponsored, co-sponsored with ISOC New York and Access Now, was on March sixth. It was a webinar called Mapping Humanitarian Tech: Exposing Protection Gaps and Digital Transformation Programs. The presenter there was the Access Now Report writer Julio Copi, who's a senior humanitarian officer at Access Now, and then I also was the moderator of that event. We have an event coming up, so pitch for this. It's next Tuesday, June twenty-fifth. It's a webinar called Internet Shutdowns and How to Stop Them. So we went very direct with that title. Our, we have another expert panel with Natalia Krapieva, who's a senior tech legal counsel from Access Now. She'll be, all three of these presenters will be presenting on the reports that they've recently written about internet shutdowns. Then we have Joan Barata, who's a senior legal fellow at Future Free Speech Project. And again, familiar name for you all, Dan York, who's director of the Internet Technology at the Internet Society. And then we, those are our more formal panels and events that we've been putting forward. We plan to continue to do that on a regular basis. We're also trying to create more of a informal setting to recruit more members to have brainstorming breakfasts. We had a very successful one a couple of weeks ago on June sixth. It was down in Roslyn, and we have, again, another pitch. On July eleventh, a brainstorming breakfast in downtown DC. Is it at the?
At the Reagan Center, yeah.
At the Reagan Center. So on our mailing list, we'll be putting that out soon. Have you missed any? Okay. We've also voted as a board to join the Global Encryption Coalition, so we're formalizing joining that soon. So we're very excited about that. And then I guess our final update in terms of plans is that, as usual, ISOC DC is a big partner with IGF USA. So there are several of our board members and our officers who are involved in the planning of that are on the executive committee, sorry, the steering committee. And we've had several meetings thus far. At this point, we finalized the topics from a very robust response to call for topics. I think we had over sixty proposals to go through, and that's why it's also taking such a long time. So the next steps that we're at right now are to select and finalize locations and to formalize the panels and to get things moving from there. So that's the update from IGF USA. And then in terms of upcoming, we are finalizing our bylaws updates because it's the chapter has been in hiatus for a little bit, so we want to make sure that those are updated and aligned with Internet Society global. We're going to continue the brainstorming breakfasts. We're going to continue the brainstorming breakfasts and other types of membership engagement activities to help build up the active membership. We have a very strong mailing list. I think it's over 2,000 strong. So we want to increase the active membership though. And then, as I mentioned, we're going to continue with expert panel and speaker events and those are in our, in the works at this point.
So one last piece and then we'd love to kind of open it up to discussion or questions for the chapter. And that is, so the, the first brainstorming breakfast we had, we floated the idea of what should the identity of our, of our chapter be? And we were encouraged to hear from that dialogue. Really a focus around, like I said earlier, our proximity to DC from a policy standpoint, from a legislative standpoint. Thinks, you know, we, we believe our chapter is uniquely positioned to focus on that as really our mission. How do we as technologists and policy experts create and push? And advocate for the global mission of ISOC here in the DC area? And how do we leverage our chapter to do that? Sort of, that's the outcome. And you'll see some exchange on our mailing list to float that idea and ensure we've got general buy-in from the chapter at large. And then to help facilitate that some, we, you know, we, we believe there's about a half a dozen. Universities here in the area, obviously Chelsea is at one of them. And, and one of our other board members at University of Maryland. And there's a number of other strong universities in the area that have policy work in the tech space. That we're looking to build relationships there and leverage those where, you know, we can get more influence in their graduate programs or. Participation from their graduate students and get sort of early entry into that policy work. And then similarly, there's a number, you know, pretty prominent. Technology companies here in the area. So we've been actively reaching out to them, looking for partners. And as, as we continue to move forward with the monthly, excuse me, brainstorming sessions. We might look to, you know, alternate these between a breakfast or a coffee in the morning or maybe a cocktail in the afternoon. And to move them around the DC area. So it's not always in DC. We'll. Move our way up into Maryland, move our way out into Virginia and mix in DC as well and leverage some of those. Partners that are in the area to host and to help facilitate some of those engagements. So there's different things that we're trying to do, both in the private sector and on the university sector. To encourage active participation for our membership and. Move the organization into sort of a healthy impact for, for the community that we're in. So that said, we're here and if there are questions. For the chapter, anything maybe we're not thinking of that could be highlighted to us that we should be aware of, we are open.
Thank you very much. A couple of quick reactions for me before we open up a little bit further is, one, I really appreciate the, the, the work you're doing to, to host these events for brainstorming. I think that's a, a great initiative to try and get people to have. The earliest part of the conversation, which is sometimes the hardest, going and listening to somebody who's got fully formed thoughts can be informative. But kind of bringing together people who are still exploring the early, early phases of a, a topic can be very useful. And I, I, I might suggest you. Consider reaching out to the OMAC folks who have historically had these roundtables. And suggest potentially combining an OMAC roundtable and one of these brainstormings as a virtual session. Especially around one of the policy topics because it's clear from their report to the board. That there are a number of policy topics which are of a fair amount of concern to the OMAC. And obviously some of them are based or have members here in the. The DC area. So they, they may also be that entree you were looking for into the tech community. There. The other kind of question was around the policy focus. I mean, obviously, as you say, you're very close to. A bunch of policymakers doing a bunch of policy things. But it's also an intriguingly partisan era. And I'm wondering whether you have any difficulty in the chapter. With the, the different political. Currents in American politics causing. More of a whirlpool than a, a flow. Is that an issue for you or not so much?
I, I think a lot of the divisive issues. In the American political landscape today, fortunately orthogonal to. The technology-related positions and, and topics. So I don't, I don't get a sense of that divisiveness within the chapter. Primarily because we can usually focus and align on shared values and. You know, what policy should, should, should or should not impact internet infrastructure.
And I think we're also acknowledging how important it is to have an open discussion, realizing there are multiple perspectives. So I think that on several of the panels also that we have done and we're planning to do in the future. We want to have it not, I mean, this word debate is very strong, but to have an opportunity to have a conversation. To help advance discussion and so not to necessarily be so concerned about who's on what side, but to have a space for discussion. I think it's going to be more of our values rather than putting forward a specific. And you're referencing specifically controversial topics, putting forward a specific policy stance from our chapter, but rather to have just a space for discussion. With the hope of advancing progress.
So. I, I, I think I mainly agree with, with what you're saying about, you know, there not being as much divisiveness around some of the technology spaces. But from where I sit, and this is kind of a weird situation for someone coming from the eastern side of the US. I actually live where there is no internet. And I think one of the things that, that I've heard policymakers say is. We don't know that people actually need internet in, in, in all the regions. And I, and I think what happened during the pandemic was a good example of why they do. And I think being able to focus on a ISOC. Topic like connecting the unconnected. Even if you're sitting in the big policy space with lots of internet around you, you don't have to go far to find people who don't have that internet. And, and I'm wondering if you're. The people in your chapter are interested in, in kind of tackling something that they just kind of take for granted, given where they live. But you don't have to travel far outside of DC to, to find people who are completely hosed.
We haven't formalized as a chapter what are our main agenda items yet, but when we've talked about it informally, the digital divide came up as one of our. Accessibility is one of the top priorities. And I, I, it's not just about having no connectivity, but even having poor connectivity itself, like so we can have the technical term of like you have internet access. We have that check mark, but really it's not meaningful in a way to do, have the, the ways that we engage with the internet. So the digital divide, I don't want to, informally right now is one of our priorities as a discussion because it's so important to our DC DMV area membership. So thank you for, for highlighting that.
I think, I mean, if you wanted to have a discussion about where the conflicts lie and that it's usually about who pays for it, right? That's. Sometimes where the division, the divide comes from. I, I said it, so unrelated, kind of related, but unrelated. I sit on the Communications Commission for Loudoun County. And it's funny that you raise this because, you know, we specifically looked at. During COVID, this very issue, there's 8,000 plus homes in the western part of the county. It's ironic, you hear. Ashburn is the data center capital of the world or whatever, and there's all this internet, blah, 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 blah. And you go. Over 15, Route 15 on the western half of the county and 8,000 homes are not connected with broadband. So during the, yeah, during the pandemic, you know, we had. Students sitting in parking lots of libraries or at restaurants or McDonald's or whatever, just trying to figure out where to get. Zoomed so they can watch their teacher try to teach. So, yeah, it's, it's been addressed, right? Through some public-private partnership constructs and there's. Fiber being constructed now and all this other stuff. So there are ways to solve it. And it's a, it is a hot topic. And it's funny that, you know, just here in the DC suburbs, it's, it's also an issue for underserved and unserved homes.
So I also wanted to, can I ask you to maybe reflect a little bit on the process? That your chapter went through to decide to join the Global Encryption Coalition. Obviously, that's a great step. And it sounds like it's a policy initiative that you wish to, to put your shoulders to the wheel on. What was the process of making that decision like for you?
Fairly straightforward, actually. So we got a great suggestion from, from Kyle Schulman to, to, to look into this. So as a chapter, we, we investigated more in detail. There were several of our board members who were already very familiar with it, had done work with the coalition. And so in our discussions. It was just pretty outward positivity about the coalition. So it was a fairly easy conversation, actually.
Okay.
I always think I'm loud enough with my activist voice, but. Thanks, Ron and Chelsea. I may not have very technical questions, but just hearing from Brian about connectivity in some parts of. The US, which is third world problems. So misery loves company sometimes, but anyway, just to say, are you, is there any way that your chapter is looking at? Or how do you connect with other chapters around the world in terms of learning? Collaborating on similar issues like this? And, and if there are experiences like that that you can share. What has been the benefit especially to chapters in other parts of the world? Who are facing more difficult issues around policy, connectivity and the rest. But don't have the access that you have to, you know, to, to, to what makes you overcome some of those challenges. Thank you.
Love the question. How do we, how do we benefit from connecting with the other chapters and collaborating on things? I'll punt it back. How do we do that? I mean, I, I, I say that a little bit unjust, but, you know, we're expecting. Sometime with Kyle to sit down and I think as our North American. Chapter rep from, from the mothership, like we'll ask for help for that. But I, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves because we have. Just sort of the resuscitation process we need to finish. And then, yeah, down the road, I, I'm certainly thinking there's, there's some good collaboration. You know, we talked about the, the. Combined webinar we did with the New York chapter. But to take it even beyond just the east coast of the United States and look at. To your point, are there other chapters that are trying to solve similar issues or need help solving similar issues? And can we help advocate jointly? Completely open to that. Definitely want to cross that bridge when we, when we're ready.
Yes, and I think that the webinars are going to be the best opportunity for that in terms of just logistics and feasibility. We are working on and in discussions of, I mean, this is future tense. To do some webinars with chapters in Asia and within Africa. But we are, it's our, our main obstacle right now we've had is this, again, the resuscitation period of focusing on getting the ISOC DC up before we can even. Work on these really, really important collaborations, but that is also one of our priorities.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry, I didn't hear anything. Thanks.
Just to that, okay, your, your point is, is well taken. There's quite a bit of interest among chapters of collaborating and learning from each other. Just last week, we had, and Kyle Schulman and Nancy Cueros. Both of whom are our chapter engagement managers for North America and Latin America, had a joint session between the regions and they're about 100 and. I'm looking at the numbers, about 107 participants across 21 countries. Talking about some of the legislative developments in the regions. And how they can collaborate, what the issues are to ensure that everybody understands what's at stake and what the concerns are. And. And so I think there's, we're trying some things out because there is this, this hunger to. To work together, to, to speak together and, and learn from each other. Brazil, I think in the Brazil, ISOC Brazil presentation back in March. They expressed a similar desire to do that sort of thing. So, you know, I think there's, there's, there's some room. To develop there and it's, and it's great that you're already, you know, making some of those steps with New York. And like you said, as you have a solid foundation, you know, we'll be there to, to support that.
So Caleb.
So. One of the few things that, for me, that I think I'd like to see, although I think it should come up on the agenda, it'll be on some, some other part of the agenda. Is to see where more chapters get to have not just webinars. Where they can share their experiences. I'd like to see them actually have physical meets. Where they can connect directly because I, I keep saying it, trust me, having to meet people. And have conversations over coffee or something builds certain network that is beyond. The computer networks that we do have, right? And so I would only want to encourage that and like. From guess it, it's strange to see that some part of the US. Having some Africa issues. With no internet, but I think it's also a good opportunity for you guys to tap into the community network. That is part of ISOC's mission to expand internet across stuff. If that is something that. Those regions need, right?
Yeah.
Any other comments for the DC chapter? Then let me just thank you on behalf of the board for, for coming and chatting with us today. It's really great to hear about the resuscitation of the chapter and the work you're doing. And it sounds like. You have mapped out quite a great plan for continuing to move forward and continuing to. Take advantage of your ringside seat here in Policy Central. We look forward to hearing more from you as, as that evolves. Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is the report from the OMAC. Do we have somebody from OMAC online?
Mel Kewer is not here yet, but we are about 10 minutes ahead of schedule.
Okay, so I think then I will take a moment to, to say that. You should be getting a poll any second now. From, from Lauren on date availability, both remote and in person for the retreat. That'll come inside. Word effect. But she's going to put the, the link into the. The Slack as well. So it'll be a survey and word effect. Well, if, if we could actually just take a quick moment and fill it out now. That might enable us to, to resolve this today or tomorrow, which would be great for the planning that the. The foundation and. The grantees would need to do to, to help make sure that we could add this. So while people are filling that out, I'll just note that we are probably going to receive the IB, ITF and. Trust reports. Later in the summer, those will be associated with the ITF meeting that's upcoming in Vancouver. Typically the IB and, and ITF chair report in association with one of the meetings. And because we're meeting a little bit in advance of that, the OMAC report is the only one we'll be considering today. And because we're meeting a little bit in advance of that, the OMAC report is the only one we'll be considering today. So while people are filling that out, I'll just note that we are probably going to receive the IB, ITF and, uh, trust reports, uh, later in the summer, uh, those will be associated with the ITF meeting that's upcoming in Vancouver. Typically the IB and, and ITF chair report in association with one of the meetings. And because we're meeting a little bit in advance of that, the OMAC report is the only one we'll be considering today. All right. So Lauren's going to put up, uh, the results of the surveys so far. You might need to increase the zoom on that. Thank you. Uh, so the, the long lines appear to be 20, 22 September and can you keep scrolling? Yeah. And three, none of these dates for me, which is really a problem. Um, obviously. Uh, this is just the, um, in person. Can we, can we go down? Keep going. Right. Okay. So there's no, uh, if we combine the two and have both, um, uh, in person and remote, there's nobody, there, there's no collection, none of these dates work for me, which is good, right? So there, there should be, theory states, some aggregation of this, where the, uh, the total number of, the, the total board can meet. It also looks like.
I'm, I'm guessing the way this was worded is confusing people because people clearly have said, I can participate in person, but not remotely. And that's not the intent, right? So it, it's worded as if you prefer this or you prefer that. So I, I think if, if you can participate at all remotely, even if you prefer in person, you should probably check the remote part of that so that we can.
Okay. Uh, so I think your understanding and mine were slightly different. Um, so let's adopt yours and say, can people go back and retake the survey? So that you list every date you can do, um, in person and list all of those dates, uh, as remote, plus any other dates you can do remote.
So effectively, the, um, the remote would be a superset of whatever you can do onsite, right?
Where I was expecting to, to collect that superset by adding the date, the, the people in the, in the group on that date, uh, in the top half and the people in the, uh, the lower half in that same date to get, to get the superset. Uh, Barry is suggesting we do it by having everybody list both the dates that they can do it, uh, in, in person and also the dates that they can do it remotely, which should include the dates that they can do it in person. Because in person is a.
Yeah, I think, okay, maybe, yeah, good point. You cleared it. But that's the way I did it. Like, I assumed that if I could do it remotely, sorry, in person, I could also do it remotely.
Yeah. And. Okay. So, uh, if people made a different selection for remote that was smaller than the one they can do in person, it might be a good idea to go back and resubmit. I'm doing that for myself right now. Yes. Presuming worst case, you're actually there and participating remotely from Nairobi, which is going to be a bit odd for you, but.
Fly all the way there and sit in my hotel.
Well, if you, as somebody who's had, uh, a virus or two where that, that caused that to happen, I, I know that. Okay. Well, while people are, uh, working on that, it, it doesn't look like, uh, any of the OMAC folks have been able to join us this morning. Uh, so we'll, we'll go ahead and finish that and, and then we'll discuss the report, uh, without them. Because there, there are some interesting items in it we should, we should talk about. We have updated. Okay. So the top part shouldn't have changed. And it still looks like 2020, sorry, the 20 to 20. 21st to 23rd is the longest line? Yeah. Oh, okay. The 20th to 22nd and 21st to 23rd are the longest line. And how many people can make it in person for that? Can you go up to the top? So we can see the nine. Okay. The maximum number of people who can make it in person is nine. I have to say that's a bit worrying for a retreat to have four out of the 13 of us remote. That's, that's a bit worrying. Because I, I feel like, as Caleb has pointed out, our ability to be together and to have, that kind of interaction is a very important part of our meetings, especially the retreat, because it's really the first long meeting, where we, we can have that kind of time to talk about the, um, the year to come. So I think that may mean we, we may unfortunately have to go back to the question of where we have it. Anybody want to share thoughts on that?
Cutting out travel time would make a significant difference, right? Because it's, you know, two days versus the six days, right?
Yeah. Uh, well, cutting out the travel time won't work for everybody. Some people have travel time, no matter what. Marines, for example, as a trooper for being here, she will always have the, a, a travel time, uh, unless we join her in the Cook Islands. Not, not an option. And, and. No, not, not unfortunately something that's going to be, uh, overly easy to afford. Um, but the, the, the fact that we, we might not have the, the additional day for the site visit and potentially lower travel time may in fact make that, uh, a little bit more practical. This is, uh, regrettable because obviously there's been a lot of work, uh, put into trying to consider this and it would be a very good opportunity. But it, it is a concern. Laura?
Um, one thing to propose, I think that there's a lot of trustees who would really like to go into a site visit at some point, but maybe we separate that from the retreat. I don't know. Is that a terrible idea? It's okay to say it's a terrible idea.
It's not a terrible idea. It's just a cost problem, right? Um, so if, if we wanted to say, let's say that the trustees who are involved in, uh, the advisory committee were the ones who are going to do a site visit, it's a smaller group. Uh, the costs would go down as a result of that and the scheduling, uh, would get significantly easier, but we would get some aspect of this interaction, uh, as a result of that. So, um, if we can't do this, let's discuss how we might get uh, an appropriate group, uh, from the, uh, from the board to do this in a way that does not, uh, kind of create, uh, either a significant extra burden for, for those trustees in terms of time, because obviously if you're going to spend two weeks, uh, traveling, because you're going to do both the site visit and then a, a retreat all in June, that's a, that's a huge commitment and we have to be very careful about asking people for that commitment of time. Um, but it's something that we can certainly discuss as we keep going. So, uh, I really appreciate everybody, uh, going through that exercise. I think it's helped clarify what some of the issues may be here. Let's, let's keep talking about it over lunch and informally to see if we can find a way forward here, um, and, and go from there. Okay. So let's, uh, switch for the moment then to the, um, OMAC report, uh, which they have submitted and you should have in Board Effect. Uh, there are a couple of things to highlight in this. One is the OMAC elections themselves. So, um, they have launched the officer elections, uh, to nominate like up to three OMAC officers. Um, and so if you have uh, colleagues who are, uh, in companies who are OMAC members that might, might be interested to stand for this, it would be a very good opportunity to reach out to them and let them know of the, uh, the officer elections, just to make sure that, uh, we have a, a robust set of opportunity, robust set of candidates there. They also recount two of the recent roundtables, one of which was the, the meeting with, uh, board members to discuss the 2030 strategy. And, uh, the other of which was, uh, uh, around defending the internet in the United Nations. And that in turn is reflected in their, uh, key learnings, which I think are also part of, partly advice to us. Uh, where they say that the OMAC values more discussion opportunities around UN processes, including the Global Digital Compact and the WISIS Plus 20. Now, obviously the Global Digital Compact has a lot of things in it that are not internet specific. It's only one of the sections and AI and other elements of the, uh, uh, the development goals of the UN are, are part of it. But the internet related one is, uh, quite important, uh, obviously both to ISOC and more generally, uh, and, uh, staff were following the, the Global Digital Compact and WISIS Plus 20 activities quite carefully. Um, so it's good to know that the OMAC would value more discussion around that. And I suspect the truth, that is true for chapters as well. So there may be chapters who have interest there. The other point here is that the OMAC welcomes and encourages the Internet Society to explore ways the iStar community, uh, can better coordinate and unite messages. Now here, the iStar community, I believe they mean, uh, the Internet Collaboration List that was set up some years ago, uh, which includes, uh, folks from ICANN, the RIRs, some of the, uh, country code, uh, domain name managers and, and others who, you're, you're shaking your head.
The Internet Collaboration List is much, much broader than that now. It's, it's a.
I, I wasn't done, but keep going. Yeah. No takeover. Who, who else is on it?
Well, it's hard to say. Um, it's, it's just become a list of people interested in the topic. Whereas the iStar list is the tighter subset that you were mentioning.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, I think that one of the questions here is coordinate and unite messages around what? And historically that group has really, um, met challenges. It has come together when there was a specific issue to respond to. And I believe that the current intent from previous discussions is to, to remain focused on that mode of operations, where when there are challenges, this group can coordinate and, and, and meet even in person if need be, uh, to, to respond to those, but that when there are no pressing challenges, uh, the amount of coordination which needs to go on is mostly handled at ongoing staff level. There have been a small number of occasions when the boards have met, uh, together. There was one ICANN and ISOC board joint meeting, um, that I can recall, and there may have been others that I can't recall. But in general, this is something that occurs at, at the staff level. Uh, so I believe that this would be something rather than a, uh, a piece of advice to the board would become an advice to, uh, to Andrew and Sally. So. Um, any other thoughts on the OMAC report? Okay. Uh, we are running a little bit ahead. The next thing on the agenda is the President and CEO report. Do we want to take that now before breaking for lunch? Andrew?
Sure.
Okay. Why don't we take that now then?
Uh, so I circulated a report. Uh, you will have it in Board Effect. As I noted in the introduction to it, most of the reporting, uh, in these meetings is broken out into the components, um, of the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation. So those are the main reports that I would urge you to follow, since that's where most of the work goes on. Uh, and this is just stuff that is, you know, kind of the ancillary things. I don't know if there are any questions about the report. If not, we're going to have a really early break for lunch.
Well, I did want to go back to the accessibility topic, which you mentioned in the report and what you, you, you've had this. And I think, from a very practical perspective, it sounds as if the staff has continued to make progress on this in the absence of a formal policy. And of course that's very good news, right? We, we, we never want the progress to be held back by, by, by a situation like that. But what we probably need to do is to figure out a way to, to provide a demarcation point in the development of the policy so that we can say, okay, we, we, we are aligning with the, the version of the policy that was the draft as of such and such a date. And we'll continue to evolve as the discussions around the, um, accessibility policy in the Accessibility SIG evolve. But, uh, we, we, we kind of, we, we want to be able to, and, and I'm going to, to call this an implementation draft, which is a, a term from the ITF. We want to be able to say, this is the version that we're implementing to for the moment and, uh, we will learn from that implementation. And then go back to the community with, uh, here is the policy, uh, that we were working toward. And here's the, uh, implementation aspects of it. And we want you to judge them together. And I think one of the advantages to that is some of what it sounds like the community has been struggling with is what parts belong in the implementation plan and what parts belong in the policy. And I'm hopeful, given that, you know, the implementation has been proceeding, that bringing those to the SIG together may help us finalize the policy in the long term. And unfortunately I'm looking to Andrew, who does not look like this is, um, going to be as easy as I'm, my ever optimistic self is, is assuming it's to be. So perhaps you could share with us what challenges you see to that or what, what thoughts you have?
Well, the central problem that we're facing is that people are kind of implementing ad hoc, whatever they think will work. And so we don't have a, we don't have a sort of consistent set of, of principles that are driving this. And so people are just implementing whatever they can. Uh, we also don't have any money for this. We don't, we don't have, we don't have bodies. And, um, as a straightforward problem, if we don't have a, a policy against which to implement stuff, then I don't really have a justification for, you know, stopping other activity for which we do have, um, board approval to go off and, and do this thing. Um, so I, I don't have anything against which to implement. And, uh, without that, I don't have staff to, uh, to do this. And so people are doing the best that they can, you know, kind of ad hoc. The result of that is that the organization is implementing things inconsistently across the organization because they're doing whatever they think, they think is going to work in this case. We don't have it, you know, we don't have anybody sort of, um, as a kind of major domo looking after this. Um, we don't really have the resources to, um, uh, to run after it. And we don't, uh, we, we don't have, you know, we, we don't have a something to give somebody to say, okay, well, this is what it is that you've got to implement. So I can, I can give them a, a performance requirement that they, they can then satisfy. So fundamentally, I mean, without sort of agreement on these are what the principles are. You know, we, we can't really make any progress. And, you know, from my point of view, I'm kind of out of time. So this is going to become somebody else's problem. And so I'm trying to draw a line under it and say, you know, okay, well, hand this to the next CEO.
Okay. I think I made one error in, in, in how I put this. I'm going to correct that and then go to Caleb. And that is, I, I was actually suggesting that you take the draft policy that had been shared with the board or some minor variation of it that has been, uh, seen by the, uh, Accessibility SIG and was not part of the controversial aspects of, of their feedback and call. And call that version one, implement to that and go, go forward so that you did have something to have requirements against and, and go forward from there. And I apologize that that was not clearly part of what I was saying.
Well, okay, except that that's in explicit violation of the board's of, of the board's resolution, right? Because it says quite explicitly, nothing about us without us, the, the standing group literally edited this the other day after I said, okay, this is, this is what I'm sending to the board. They went in and changed it anyway. So like, there's not agreement about what this thing is. And, and I, I, the standing group has been pretty clear with me that they do not agree with, with the text as it stands.
Okay, if, if there's, if there's no part of it at which they do agree, I, I see the problem.
I mean, they're changing things throughout the document. So I mean, I, I, I don't think, I don't actually think there are principles here that are, that are, are different. I think the, the challenge is that the members of the standing group think that there should be a lot more detail in the policy. And from the point of view of somebody who has to implement a policy, I am dead set against that because, you know, that becomes a, that becomes a compliance matter for us. And every one of those changes then has to come back here for these kinds of updates. Rather than something that is like, you know, here's what the policy is, and then the implementation can be changed according to, accordingly, as events move along.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Caleb?
Thank you very much. Thank you. So I want us to break down a few things here, right? And here's my view. People should be all accountable for their actions when there is a board resolution and I would hold you accountable, Andrew, at this point. Why am I holding you accountable? This resolution was passed at the meeting 170. That's April 1st to 2nd, 2023, right? And so between that period and now, that's one year past. Now, you cannot drive an implementation without a policy document to give direction to that implementation. It can never be done. And so you are informing me right now that you went ahead and did some implementation strategically in my head. As a project manager, I think that without a project charter, you cannot drive a project.
So, but I think that's the point he was just making.
Please, I, I'd like, I'd like to emphasize my point. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, given that this has been said, right? I am on the, what do they call this committee now? Compensation Committee. And part of the reasons why we are looking at goals that we're giving to the CEO, right? That say, hey, we want to pay this bonus is simply because we feel
May I ask you to, to stick to the topic, please? The topic we're talking about is the
I am speaking to the topic, please, Mr. Chair. It's simply because we felt that this was part of your goals, CEO goals, and we wanted you to drive this. And we went ahead with that. And so I'm asking on an accountability terms now, that given that you are accountable for this, all that is needed is you came up with a draft. Let's assume it says quarterly, the last first quarter that I, I came to this meeting, this board, there was no report. The resolution is here. I, I, I took my time to read through. It says you are expected to give a quarterly report on this. There was no quarterly report at every point in time that is expected. At least this is what the resolution says. And so holding you accountable and then seeing an email saying that it's no longer your job, it is now the job of the next CEO. And so I asked myself the question, why are you running away from your responsibilities?
Caleb, I, I think the point we're on right now is how do we resolve the issue between the Accessibility Committee's view and the draft? And I think the, the question I posed was specific to is there an interim step here? And I believe the answer we got was that the interim step would have required there to be some commonality in view between the, the draft, which this board has already seen and the, the view of the Accessibility SIG. And it sounds like there isn't enough commonality at the moment for us to move forward with anything on an interim basis. And as Andrew pointed out, that means that there is no project. And as you rightly point out, you could not run a project without that. And is, since accessibility is sufficiently important that we can't simply ignore it, we're getting ad hoc efforts as well. So the board's problem at this point, no matter who's doing it, is to work out whether we wait, we set a deadline, we ask the SIG specific questions as the board about the policy, since it's something that we, we, we have driven to this extent or not. And so from the board's perspective, you know, is this something where we simply say, okay, this is taking longer, but we will continue to wait? Where, or whether, whether there is an action for the board here? And I, I would encourage folks to think about it in terms of what action can the board take here to help the Accessibility SIG and the staff come to an agreement around this? And I, I believe absolutely that the Accessibility SIG is trying to get the right thing to happen. But if they are specifying implementations, that is not the policy level of what the board saw in the draft or, or approved for taking to the Accessibility SIG. So there are some issues there. Caleb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I believe that the job of the board is done here on this particular issue. We passed the resolution. And then we directed the CEO, please go drive the consensus and seeing that this policy is implemented, right? And if that is our job, we need to separate the job of the board and the policy document, and then the implementation at the end of the day, right? Now, the resolution was passed April 1st. CEO drives consensus with the, the SIG in charge of accessibility. That is supposed to be something that should be ongoing. For crying out loud, it's not a job he is supposed to do. He should delegate it out to someone else. And so if there is a push, an intentional push across board, I think for over one year, this, after the board resolution, this should have been completed. Therefore, my point is, this should not be left open for the next CEO to inherit, right? This must be completed by him. And it should drive the consensus till we conclude it. And it should be part of the fact that this is part of his CEO goals that he must complete and not transpire. There must be justification. So I'm emphasizing on this.
I, I must, I must ask you to clarify how you think you drive consensus in a community group when you are not a part of the community and it is important to the resolution's text that their input be considered? This is, this is part of the nothing about us without us that was a clear part of that resolution. Driving them to consensus sounds as if you expect that to be imposed. And I would like to hear if I'm mishearing that, and if I am, what your theory is.
So we are all in a multi-stakeholder environment, right? And I've chaired a couple of multi-stakeholder engagements. And I understand what it means to drive consensus. It means simply that you don't have an opinion. Allow the opinion to fly despite the fact that you have your own opinions. And then bring it and say, okay, we've been able to agree on point one, point two, we are unable to agree on point three. Can we put this as a version one or version two? And we continue to improve on this and this part? Let's come to a conclusion about how we will drive this part, right? The other day, we just saw a, a document which he said he probably was lifted from somewhere or something. I, I, I'm not sure if my memory serves me right, but please correct me if I'm wrong on that. Like it was lifted, oh, there were editorial issues and all of that. And then you wanted this to be adapted to those, to the, to the working group's view. I would have said, okay, good. You delegated a staff, right? Who should work with these guys and see how they can have, I know you're a business CEO, you have to do other things, delegate a staff and say, work with these guys at least once every month and see how we can come up with a final draft within given a timeline, right? And so my, my general view in this now is I am not saying that you impose a view. I am saying try to engage more and agree on certain points in the documents. The ones that are not agreeable, put it aside and say, let's continue conversation and create different versions of that charter until we get to the final draft. And so my view finally is it must be completed before he leaves a seat as a CEO and not transfer it to the incoming CEO. He should try or as much as possible to complete it. It's part of his goals.
First of all, if people are going to sit here and accuse me of running away from my responsibilities, then I think I am going to treat them with a fair degree of contempt. I want to be perfectly clear about this. There are version numbers at the top of that document. It is clear that we have gone through several iterations of it. You say, delegate this to somebody. To whom would you have me delegate it? I do not have anybody. I am out of personnel. This board was informed about that and the previous board was informed about that as well. It is not true that I have, I have neglected my responsibilities to report to the board. I have reported on this several times. I've talked about it on many occasions. And I have in fact been quite clear that there isn't anybody else to do it. And so it had to stand in line. And it had to stand in line because we had failures in the staff organization. We had some gaps. That's just the part of the reality. There's only so much that one can do. There was no deadline in this, in this resolution. It is not there in the resolution and is not in fact been imposed on me yet. This is the last meeting at which I will be the CEO and therefore I am reporting to this board that this is the last occasion I will have unless there is another meeting of the board for me to report on it. And that's what you're hearing me say. Now, that does not mean that I'm going to leave this alone and just let it, you know, lie fallow from now until September. But I will not have a chance to report back to the board in, in any meeting. And I don't think it's weird that I should therefore report to you. I didn't manage to get this done. I didn't. I'm not sure what you would do in the event that I don't manage to get it done. What exactly is it you're saying? Oh, I expect you to do this. Great. That's fine. I expect to do it too. I would like to do it. I would like to, I would like it to be finished. I don't want to leave things hanging for people. But the reality is, we're out of time. I don't have the time to do this. I'm not running away from anything. I am trying to do my job. And part of that job is to keep this board informed of what I am and am not able to do. I am not able, for reasons I do not fully understand, to get the standing committee to accept, or the standing group to accept the idea that the policy and the implementation are really distinct things. They have to be because the policy is something on which we will be held accountable by our auditors. They check us against our, our policies. It's one of the things they do. That's what you have auditors for. And therefore I cannot have all kinds of details of how the implementation works inside the policy. It's foolish to do that. Any CEO would be a fool to put that kind of detail inside the policy. Because you can't keep it up to date. And as soon as you fail to do something that's in the policy, even if it's a better idea to do something else, you're in violation of your policies and therefore you, you don't conform. That's not good management and I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to expose the organization to that kind of risk, no matter how important accessibility is to me and to the organization. Therefore, the policy needs to be limited in the, in its scope. And that is the point that I've tried to make several times. Unfortunately, the standing group doesn't agree with me. I have theories about, about why that is. I, they're not ones that I'm, you know, really anxious to air here in an open session, but I have theories about it. And it seems to me that it's entirely possible that I will not be successful in convincing them of something, you know, of, of proceeding in another way. But what Ted was proposing seems to me to be like, it seems a, a tantalizing idea. Except that I don't have anything to, to give the staff as here's the charge that you're getting. I can't give them that because I can't get agreement on the policy. So either we, either the board say, okay, well, I'm going to give you a different instruction in order, you know, despite this resolution, we're going to give you some modified instructions about like proceeding with an, an interim policy or something like that, which is in violation of that prior resolution. Or else we just continue working on this thing and stuff continues to drift in ways that are not particularly good for anybody. I don't think that either one of these choices is a good idea, but I don't have a third option for what, for what to implement. Finally, I really, really resent the suggestion that I am somehow being negligent here. And I think that you should retract that claim.
So I wrote a quick rebuttal in just one statement. Your contempt for myself and a couple of other board members is also noted. Just for the record, and I'm not withdrawing any statement that I have earlier made. I stand on the statements that I have made. And I insist that the job must as much as possible be completed and leave less for the incoming CEO. Because that was not part of our, or whoever is the incoming CEO, that is not their, their CEO goals. Thank you. But I, I believe in continuity of, continuum of things, right? I'll leave you at that. But the contempt which you mentioned is duly noted.
So I, I've been actually going back and rereading through this policy again. One thing that I see in here that, that catches my eye is that we didn't actually say we had to get agreement from the SIG to do this. So my suggestion is, is that maybe the action moving forward is either Andrew or Sally, depending on when they wanted to do this, is basically appoint someone to write the policy rather than have the STIG be involved in doing it directly.
So there, there is a draft already.
Right?
And I think the board action here goes back to the question that was just raised. Do we modify either in writing the instructions or modify our understanding with the staff of how to complete this? When this was originally brought to the board, that principle, nothing about us without us, was very, very important to the members of the board at the time, because they were very clear that what they wanted was to ensure that the accessibility issues were not seen as something that was being imposed by the board, but was something that was desired by the community and where the community's needs were going to be met. The good news is, I believe very strongly that the whole organization, either at the board level or at the staff level, is dedicated to meeting the needs of this community. However, as has been pointed out, there are issues with where you draw the line between where a policy is and what an implementation practice is. And I agree that there are risks in putting things into the policy which are part of the implementation because it does ossify your choices going forward. If you say, we will use this screen reader software at the policy level, if someone comes up with a better screen reader software, you must modify the policy to make every implementation change. So the more detailed you get in the policy, the less freedom you have to make improvements as you go. Now, I believe what the board should consider, and I, I suggest that we do so at an interim meeting rather than at this meeting, is to update our understanding either by updating that resolution or by providing other instructions that says, please go forward with the policy noting where there are disagreements with the, the community on the level of detail, but go forward with the policy simply noting to the board that that has occurred. And then take that forward as the implementation and we will then take the implementation and the policy back to the community for further consultation. Once the progress has, has been finalized. I believe that that's the way we can get the work done according to the policy with the least amount of impact toward the expectations of the SIG, because we will deliver on their expectations in the implementation. What we will not deliver is the ossified policy. And I believe that is a, a way forward for the board and the staff here that gets us as far forward as we can for this iteration. Now, I think we all understand accessibility is not a one and done. It is always an iterative process. And I think what we have to do at this point is commit ourselves to making that iteration work by potentially saying to the, to the SIG, yes, we will meet your needs as expressed, not in the policy, but in the implementations which follow from it. And, and go from there. Caleb?
So obviously, from, from what I, I see, I, I want to align a little bit with Bran. So obviously, from from what I I see, I I want to align a little bit with um Bran.
So may I ask you to get closer to your microphone?
Okay, so I want to align um with something Bran said right now. And I think I I see some wisdom in in um in something that we put budgets aside for certain tasks such as communication and legal works and HR and all of that. Taking this job most uh or taking this specific uh resolution more seriously. I want to suggest that if we don't have someone who is an accessibility expert internally, right, to do the job, let's have a budget for someone who is an accessibility specialist, right? And delegate it as a contract to say, hey, we have this particular SIG you have to work with, and this is our brief from Internet Society. Here's your contract. You have to run this within this timeframe and see how you can wrap this project up with these guys um within this specific time timeframe. And so it's my suggestion for trying to find a middle point where I see that maybe they might be happy to have someone receptive to them, right? Someone very receptive to their views or someone who they might feel comfortable working with uh because I don't understand what the tensions are currently um between how the engagement is with them, right? And I don't understand if there are some I don't things I don't want to talk about. But I feel that they should be, the board should um 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 work with the CEO to have a contract for someone who is actually and really an accessibility specialist to work with them and get a conclusion on this matter. That's that's what I want to suggest.
Uh, Charles and then Funky.
Okay, uh, first of all, I've been trying to read the documents, uh, but to me, uh, I don't fully understand what has been balking us down in terms of the difference between the accessibility principle and culture that that and the implementation practice details and so on, you know. To me, they are still a quite higher level cultural wordings and so on. So but but I think that is actually not the most important thing. I think the most important thing is to try to close up the distance between the SG, what they're they're thinking, really thinking about and the management, CEO. Uh, I think rather than just going back and forth with amending documents and so on and uh, you know, then nobody can fully uh uh agree on 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 these documents, you know. You give me another document, I'll amend it, right? So I think the most important thing is just sit down and talk and uh try to close up the distance. And if there's if it's necessary, I think a few of us who's been trying to work closely with the SG would volunteer to help, to mediate, to try to close up the distance uh if that is acceptable to to the management. I think they don't want to see any further delay as well. And I appreciate what Andrew has been trying to do, but you know, we all wish that, you know, we could do better. But the bottom line is, I think we all agree and the SG will agree that they want to see movement on some of these issues. So I I uh I so I I think rather than focusing too much on the wordings or the documents, and although I agree with uh uh what Caleb has been saying about budgeting for a person and so on, it's it's sort of like, I don't know whether this is stepping beyond our response, our our duty or responsibility as a as trustee to tell management what to do because you 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 because you've heard what we said already. But I just think that maybe it's time for us to really try to talk to the SG and understand that and and maybe maybe the distance isn't, the gap isn't as big as we we see them to see them to be. And uh we can simply move on. And that's what I want to see. So I I I don't want us to, I mean, what I really want to say is I don't want us to be too bogged down with just the documentation. I think we should try to sit down and talk to the SG and see wh- what kind of actions. Or or maybe no, maybe the management should tell them, okay, if we move on, if we get to work from now on, this is what you're going to see. And I think maybe they will be happy. So that's all I want to say.
Okay.
Thank you, Ted. And just to say, I I would like to ask for some calm on this topic and because it's also very sensitive and it's something we're also doing without persons with disability on the board, at least to the best of my knowledge. It might be useful um to, I don't know, is there is there a disability committee looking at this? Is that what the standing group is? So there's a disability community. And um perhaps rather than outsource, which I don't have any problem with, can we find a way to articulate what exactly, outside the document, what exactly is the is the the challenge? I say this because I worked on the Disability Act for Nigeria for nine years. And for nine years, we kept going back and forth with the legislature. I will take time to read it and see, but I mean, the constituency is not my general constituency from an advocacy background, but of course, it's almost the same uh issue. But what worked in that conversation for me and the over thirty seven million persons with disability was to find those who were affected by the issues themselves, to even say, give us a draft. What would you like to see rather than existing document? Because we went and nine years of misery going round and round in circles over this. Even though at the end of the day, they sort of still came back to this draft policy because they didn't have guidelines, but perhaps outside the document to say, what exactly is the issue? Let's let's put the document aside. What would you like to see? What is the problem? And then we can work from that uh solution. Otherwise, if this is what they came up with as the standing group or is this what the what ISOC itself came up with as the policy for them to adopt, to edit, you know, it would always continue. We would always have this back and forth. It's I think it's a very important project and it's a legacy uh project for me uh as agenda and social inclusion expert, and it's something I feel that the board can leave, the outgoing CEO, the incoming CEO. It's something that should be um a legacy that we want to leave uh going forward. But let's start from having a special session if the board can have that, and I'm happy to also help you with that, a special session, and you can come up with persons with disability who work on such policy documents to take the lead rather than us because they are did nothing for us without us uh where was, you know, an African proverb says you can shave a person's head in their absence. And sometimes we don't know what they feel, what they think and what the issues are that are specific. Thank you. I hope I clear and not rambling.
Uh, so I have Marine, Caleb and Victor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just, I mean, I know that I'm coming in so like very late in the in the in the um scheme of things, but I'm just trying to sort of like figure out why there is, you know, why there is such, you know, why there is the confusion from board level and the user level. I mean, from from my perspective, I sort of like see that the board is the one who actually creates the policy. And um, you know, it's like develop develops a policy based on the principles and all that there and as they sort of like that. And then it's the consultation that's actually required. You know, it's actually meeting with the with the end user group and actually making sure that they are there on that they actually sort of like um agree or, you know, sort of like with the policy. And and if once that sort of like settled, then then I think they also should be involved in the um actual planning of the implementation of it in 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 collaboration with the board. Otherwise, there is always going to be conflict. And I can't understand why it's sort of apparently been so ongoing. I just sort of feel that, you know, like, I mean, there just needs to be, you know, a lot more negotiation. As Frank said, like, we do need to talk with each other.
Uh, so just to to clarify one point of history before Caleb joins, uh, the the board asked staff to develop the policy. That was uh that that was done, but um once it was done, uh, according to the resolution, the consultation with the the community was the next step. And that is where we are right now. And the consultation with the community has uh the consequence that there is a disagreement on the level of specificity in the policy, and that's where the um the slowdown has occurred because there's no disagreement about the desire to move forward and there's no disagreement on 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 the general principles. There's a disagreement of whether the policy ought to say, not simply, we will do this class of things to serve this community, but at what depth, right? And the more you specify, the more you have to demonstrate to auditors and others that that's actually what you did. And the difficulty here is members of the community are asking for a level of specificity that would tie the organization's hands uh going forward to those specific methods or force a constant iteration of the policy. Although I I am I am taking uh Funky's words to heart, we have not spent nine years of this yet. So uh we we can still um uh look forward to a resolution with uh with the knowledge that there's there's some to go. And now many more people have joined. So I have Caleb, Victor, Kathleen, and I thought I saw Brian. Nope, all right. Uh, so Caleb, Victor, Kathleen. Oh, and and Laura.
Yeah, so, well, like Funky said, I don't think it should go past go through that nine years of things. But I have a question um for incoming CEO. Perhaps you might have a a different opinion to this or you might have a way you might want to approach this, as you mean, this is delegated over to you um um in the coming months. How do you think you can um help us solve this impasse between the SIG and the resolution the board passed versus the implement final implementation part of uh writing the policy? It's 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 just um an open question and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but please.
Well, I think um I've been thinking about this. Um, we have the the current draft as as delivered. Um, I think I would like to have a a conversation myself with the SIG to understand um directly in their words what their concerns are. And possibly um we try to draft the policy and the implementation plans in parallel. So things that aren't appropriate for a policy can shift to the implementation plan um so that we don't encounter some of the challenges that Andrew mentioned of of not being in compliance um as as technology evolves. That may be too simplistic of an answer, but that's at least where I would try to start. And um, you know, it is the case that this is important to us. It's important to our community. It is important to our reputation. Um, and and we want this, and the staff have been working to audit the websites and update online learning tools and and do a lot of things, but it it would be far more helpful to have the the established policy, um which is which is what Andrew's been trying to do. So I think that's the way that I would start is the conversation with the SIG. Um, understand the 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 points of diversion myself, um and then um see if there are ways we can shift things out of policy that don't belong there um and into a place where we can actually um move to implementation. And then we may have to update the implementation plans over time as as standards evolve and and the world changes. So that's that's what I would do. If I needed budget or consultants or the rest, um, I would ask that you um allow me to to determine that and come back to you with a with a request if that's if that's what I need.
So Ted, just wrapping up, I think I I can leave with with that.
Victor.
Yeah, I I so I wasn't going to comment on that, but I I think that's reasonable. You know, if you went down that that path, there's obviously there's something there. But just to add, I think those are reiterated a couple of times. But again, not to bring my personal stuff into this, but yeah, I I think maintaining the uh compliance component is a non-option here. Um, you know, this is a business being run at the end of the day. So um I I think you you're doing the right thing because you cannot allow something to be a policy by which you cannot stay in compliance. Or else that creates a lot more organizational challenges. Basically, you know, the auditors will catch that as noted. So um, yeah, and yeah, I think that, yeah, if you bring back a proposal uh at some point after you've tried a few more things, if it requires money and funds, I think it's being discussed and sure, fair enough, then that maybe, you know, you bring that back and we say, you know, this is worth the the cost if that's absolutely necessary. I think, you know, resolving the challenge of getting folks on on site to understand implementation versus policy, that's going to be a tricky thing. Sometimes we have those separations. It's it's a matter of really trying to bring people on side because I I I agree, you can ask us enough. That is a probably a non-negotiable line. Um, at the end of the day, or else you're just not going to be able to maintain a policy. So, yeah.
Kathleen.
So I appreciate Andrew's concerns and would echo what Victor has said in terms of compliance. It's really um there there's no option. You have to remain in compliance. Sally, your plan is a sound one. From risk management experience in the past, um you you can set up rolling implementation plans would be the easiest because you don't want to change your policy too often. There's bigger costs associated with that. Policies and frameworks are meant to be more generalized so that you can have differentiation within implementation plans. So that makes complete sense. You could also target an updated policy if that were to make sense based on, you know, practical implementations.
Thank you, Laura.
This is, uh, so the document we have is the policy. At the moment, there's no separate document at all for implementation, correct?
Yes, there is. It's actually linked in the document that he's
Oh, I totally missed that. All right, I apologize for that. But I just want to understand like the I have a second question. I hope that's okay, which is that the kind of thing we're talking about here would be something like in the policy, it says, you know, we agree to use the, we will use these file formats as specified in the implementation plan. And then the implementation plan, you say, we use HTML and PDF or whatever. Is that kind of the the degree of split?
Uh, I mean, yes, there've been a bunch of attempts to put um details about what qualifications people have to have as in, you know, there was one paragraph that was like every change um ever had to go through this um external reviewer thing, which would mean if you wanted to make a one-line change to the website, that you'd have to have a, you'd have to engage an outside consultant. I mean, like, it it's the 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 challenge is that we have a standing group who are focused quite correctly on the issues that they're concerned about. And that is what I would expect them to be on uh focused on, and I think that that's entirely correct. But I, of course, have the responsibility to make sure that the organization can in fact function. And several of the proposals have been for policies that would just tie us up in ways that we couldn't possibly work. And every time I say, no, no, this is too far. We can put this in an implementation plan, but I I get a I get a refusal. So we're we're at an impasse over this because people are attempting to make sure that as much as possible is in the policy so that they can be sure that stuff will get implemented. I uh that is what I would expect somebody who is attempting to achieve and their their outcomes to do. But for the purposes of the organization, we can't do it.
Thank you for that. I just I appreciate that it's difficult, um, and I hope that we find a way to move forward.
Uh, Caleb, Kathleen, myself.
So um one one final comment on this. Um, I I want us to maybe approach it because most of us are coming from, most people are coming from engineering background here, so you might probably understand that this approach that why don't we look at it by getting a minimum viable product first out, right? What everyone agrees on and say this is version one, building on what Sally said um when she's having a conversation with the SIG. Say, this is what ISOC agrees with. This is what the SIG agrees with. Can we just stop it here and say this is version one? And we move this forward. And then later on, we will now say we want to revisit this quarterly or let's say at the half of every year and say, um, following that we've built on this, there is a clause within that policy that says, oh, there will be a a review of this. And then we will now start bringing in other elements and start bringing in other elements and start building on that policy based on what ISOC management and then the SIG agrees on. So for me, I'm just approaching from like a product development perspective. a product development perspective of just getting out a minimum viable product first. And then build on, on the iterations on, of that product. That's, that's the way I'm suggesting we move forward and in approaching this.
Thank you, Caleb. And I, I'm happy to note that that actually jobs perfectly with what Andrew suggested. Because what Andrew suggested was that we proceed with a minimal policy and then get the implementation plan written. And I think that's largely what a lot of people have been saying. And I think what's important here is to make sure that we get two things right. And one is that the overall framework delivers the accessibility that the community needs to the extent that we can provide it. And that we, within that framework, do the best that we can to separate the policy elements that are long-lived from the implementation plans, which are of necessity going to evolve over time. So I think what Andrew has been doing and what it sounds like Sally will continue is to work with the SIG, presenting them both and work with the broader community to help them understand what the framework as a whole delivers. And I think we need to support them in this by providing budget and providing guidance to the broader community that the overall framework is designed to meet their needs rather than the policy in and of itself as an isolated piece of the framework. Uh, thanks for the robust discussion on this. It's a very important topic, if a very difficult one. Oh, okay.
Getting the minimum and then, you know, telling the SG that there, there will be opportunity to
Okay. Thank you very much. And, and speaking as somebody who is in fact mildly hearing impaired, I really would appreciate those microphones when you get a chat. Okay.
I think it's really important that the framework is there so they can see what the big picture is and they, and then, you know, like go through it.
Okay.
Piece by piece. Thanks.
Very good. Uh, once again, thanks, everybody for your, uh, your engagement on this topic. It's a difficult one and I, I'm happy that although temperatures briefly spiked, we have come to a calm moment here. Because that's the perfect moment to go to lunch, which is, I think, where we are. I believe the lunch is already set up next door. Uh, so why don't we all take a, take a break at this point in lunch for those of you who are joining us remotely. And enjoy your break from the meeting as well. Thanks. Uh, the next. Uh, thanks, uh, everyone. Uh, the next item of business is the Strategy 2025 Highlights. And we'll have Sally Mituki and Sebastian Belagamba joining us for that. Uh, we can see you on screen. Howdy. Sally, you want to start us off?
Uh, thank you. Many of you have been hearing us speak at length about the 2030 Strategy and that is of course very important to us. But it's also the case that we are in the final year of our current five-year strategy. And so we wanted to use this opportunity to update the board on the work that's been done over the last five years. Um, these are really just highlights. But it's a nice moment to, to pause and to reflect on the considerable journey that we've all been on together as, as we implemented what really was the first five-year strategy for the Internet Society. And I, I also want to note that when we developed this strategy and we began implementing it, at the same time, we were restructuring parts of the Internet Society, doing some reorganization and also trying to build a culture internally that focused or had the capacity to plan its work over long periods, deliver on those plans, measure results and, and be more transparent, both with the board and the community about, about the work that we're doing, why we're doing that work and the impact that it's having. This is a journey we are still on. Um, and I think the next phase for, for us is really being able to measure the impact of our work. It's not just about the outputs, but getting to a stage where we can measure and report with evidence, the, the impact that we're having in the world. And also be able to adjust when we're not having the level of impact or, or the things that we, we think would be effective, were not as effective. Um, and so that is a journey that we've been on and where we hope to be in five years' time is that we have a good baseline that we're developing right now for our 2030 Strategy. We're identifying and mapping out what good looks like in five years. Um, and to be able to come back to the board annually and say, this is the progress we've made along that path. Um, and we couldn't do that now if we hadn't been on this path for the last five years of building that internal culture of measurement and, and planning. So that is really something that we're, we're quite proud of. And, and this is a great moment with the new five-year strategy to be able to, to implement that. Nonetheless, there is a lot of, of great information that, that we're going to share with you today. Um, and my colleagues here, Mituki Muwange and Sebastian Belagamba are going to, to help in this presentation. So if we can go to the next slide. The 2020 to 2025 Strategy is built on three main pillars. The work that we do to build the Internet, extending it to communities that do not have it and need it most. Uh, our work to promote the Internet, um, this Internet model of networking as the preferred model. Advocacy, you see that here, promoting the deployment of technologies and protocols to secure the interconnection of independent networks. This is the work that we do to promote the Internet around the world. And then finally, uh, the third pillar is work to defend the Internet, shaping the policies of governments around the globe, countering attempts by governments to undermine encryption and defending against shutdowns around the world. So much of this will be familiar with you, for, to you, but I think it's really good to have this moment to, to show it to you. So that as we turn the page into the 2030 Strategy, you have had this work and this, this history well in mind. So with that, I am going to stop talking and hand this over to Mituki to walk us through the first, the first piece.
Thank you, Sally. And good afternoon, everyone. Greetings from slightly chilly Nairobi. It's, it's chilly by my standards. It's only 15 Celsius or 55 Fahrenheit, depending on how you, the metrics that you use. So I will talk to you, maybe by first, let me just say, I, I am the distinguished technologist for Internet growth. I will present to you an overview of our work on growing the Internet, which focuses on building and extending the resilient Internet for those who need it the most, as Sally mentioned. And as we get started, maybe if I could request, you could move to the next slide. Our work on Internet growth is based on three areas. That is fostering sustainable pairing infrastructure, connecting the unconnected and measuring the Internet. So I'll start with sustainable pairing infrastructure. If you could go to the next slide, please. Our work on fostering sustainable pairing infrastructure aims at keeping traffic local, which reduces Internet costs, provides a better Internet experience for end users, and most importantly, a more resilient Internet. The key to keeping traffic locally is establishing an Internet Exchange Point or IXP. They're a foundation for building a thriving local Internet ecosystem. However, building them is not easy. And it requires bringing together, as it requires bringing together traditional competitors in the Internet business to collaborate and exchange traffic with one another. Over time, we've come to appreciate that that is not easy. And the development of IXP is about 80% social engineering and 20% technical engineering. I like to use the example of the Panama IXP called Interred to highlight what it takes to build an IXP. It is one of the oldest IXP's have been established in 1997. Unfortunately, it did not grow as expected in the subsequent years until 2021, when there was a change in leadership. And also it received donation of essential equipment and training from the Internet Society. Pablo Ruidias is the new Executive Director of Interred. He has worked hard to rebuild the IXP from modernizing the equipment, improving the technical policies, including joining Manas. He's also negotiating with content delivery networks and relocated their IXP to a neutral facility. Today, Interred is exchanging more than 10 gigabits of traffic up from about four gigabits before the pandemic. The key to this success has actually been building a strong community around the Internet Exchange Point. Pablo is also the current ISOC Panama Chapter President. And he's working with the local stakeholders to increase the IXP's impact in Panama and Central America. They receive funds from the government. And what's interesting is this is after convincing the government not to build a new government-operated regional IXP, if we can call it that in quotes. Having a strong community around the IXP at the national level enables regions to envision a future where the most of the traffic that they consume is accessible locally. And this is a core part of the conversations at regional pairing forums that we support. In addition to conversations around enabling policy environments, the investment interest of cross-border infrastructure and fiber, and also content hosting infrastructure. The story of Interred and Pablo showcases our global approach and methodology to building a thriving local Internet ecosystem through the establishment of the Internet Exchange Points to keep traffic local. Next slide, please. Now, once a country has established an IXP and is working to develop a thriving Internet ecosystem, the next challenge is connecting those in rural, remote and underserved areas. Research has shown that, and experts have also observed that, the traditional models for connecting for, for internet connectivity are not capable of delivering sustainable connectivity to those in rural, remote areas in the near town. Some data shows that it takes about 3,000 subscribers to connect to a 3G or 4G base station to make it sustainable. Mostly because these models are designed to serve those with higher disposable incomes than those that reside in these areas. Our approach to connecting the ad-connected is by empowering communities to build locally owned connectivity solutions and connecting them to the Internet. In other words, building from the community outwards to the Internet. To achieve this, we have developed a scalable methodology that has three pillars. That is policy advocacy, capacity building and infrastructure development. Under policy advocacy, we engage policymakers to advocate for an enabling environment that supports the creation of community networks. We've also worked with friendly countries to pilot proof of concepts that we've used as examples to support our advocacy at various levels. Under capacity building, we've made available free online trainings and resources that allow us to scale the number of people who get access to the knowledge and the number of people who get trained. Under infrastructure development, we've leveraged the philanthropy team from the Internet Society Foundation to provide grants that support the deployment of community network infrastructure around the world. A notable and encouraging point is that over 30 chapters are actively involved in the development of community networks and have received support from these grant programs. So where are we at today? We are seeing a growing community of organizations, individuals, and even governments that are taking initiatives to support community network deployments around the world. For instance, in Papua New Guinea, we worked with the regulator to establish the island's first community network. It was funded using the government's Universal Access and Service Fund, which is quite rare and quite unique because governments are not keen to use universal service funds for this. In addition, the regulator included community networks in their 2022 project proposals for the fund, which opened new doors for financing new communities, networks in the country. One story I have about Papua New Guinea is that we went there back in 2016 to train them on building the IXP. So that's the first thing we did some years back. And now they're actually moving to the next phase of extending connectivity to those in remote and underserved areas. Well, it's not all been perfect. In fact, I'll be remiss not to mention about fundraising, where we've not been as successful in fundraising as we had hoped. And this is an area where we need your support as we review our fundraising strategy to make our work more attractive to donors and funders. Next slide, please. Well, you won't believe it, but in 2020, when we started this strategy, there was no easy way to use the available data to assess what an open, globally connected, secure and trust what the Internet looked like. It was also difficult to have insights on the impact of our work around the world or identify future opportunities. There are projects and organizations that actually collect data on various facets of the Internet. However, there was no single place or website that provided a curated set of analysis that could help us get deep data-driven insights into the Internet. And that is what led to the creation of PALS. The PALS platform was launched in December 2020 to track the government mandated Internet shutdowns and the adoption of emerging technologies that are key to the Internet's evolution, such as IPv6, HTTP, DNSSEC, RPKI and so on. We also provided some analyses of the data we collected. But since then, we've continued to enhance the platform by increasing the number of data partners that we have, improving the existing Internet measurements and tools, and also developing new ones. We use the data to examine the Internet trends and tell data-driven stories so that policymakers, researchers, journalists, network operators, civil society groups and others can have a better understanding of the health, availability and evolution of the Internet. This year, we have seen the Second English Chapter and the Cameroonian Chapter utilizing PALS to support their local advocacy efforts against the Internet shutdowns and promote Internet resilience. What I really wanted to highlight to you today is the report we issued in April, as you can see from the diagram on the right, which was following the submarine cable cuts off the coast of Cote d'Ivoire that affects 13 West African countries. Analysis of this incident has been written among the most detailed and informative reports available. I invite you to read it if you've not had a chance to. What I really like about this analysis is that it enabled us to see the impact of more than a decade of supporting and building a community around pairing, interconnection and IXP's in Africa. A number of the affected networks attend the AFPIF event that is organized by the Internet Society and the Africa XP Association. So they know each other very well. And that is why they were able to collaborate quickly and find alternative routes to temporarily send their traffic until the cables were repaired. And this took some time. In addition, the report highlighted the challenges and offered recommendations to improve the region's Internet resilience. And this is what PALS aims to do, to provide actionable and insightful data for all the stakeholders. Now, these examples highlight the, that we have the right stethoscope, if I could use that as an analogy, on the Internet's pulse. And it enables us to confidently continue to build, promote and defend the Internet with the knowledge of where to start and why. Thank you.
Thank you, Mituki. Do you want to take questions?
Yeah, I think to, to take questions now. First, before the questions, just let me say, I think PALS has been an enormous success. From the usage I've seen of it in policy papers or in, in in the press, it, it certainly is punching well above its weight, as far as I can tell. in the press, it it certainly is punching well above its weight, as far as I can tell. Uh and I would be interested to hear more about the usage that you mentioned in Senegal and other places in discussing um the the Pulse data and the policy objectives, if if there's more data you want to share on that.
Yes, uh so in Senegal, um earlier on, they they there was a situation, a political situation in Senegal um where they were facing internet shutdowns. And so they were able to use the Netloss tool um to actually uh get the data and use that data in their advocacy in terms of uh publishing articles in the local media where they were highlighting the actual economic loss that Senegal was facing during the time when the internet was getting shut down by the government during the height of the political crisis. And so that really did help to amplify the voice um in Senegal of the cost of internet shutdowns in the country. And so later on, um it it really elevated the chapter in in terms of being able to provide that voice we've supported by evidence and data to showcase why internet shutdowns are not good for any country or for any economy.
Thank you. Uh any other comments or questions on this topic? Caleb and then Marine.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Thank you very much. And it's Mituki. It's it's good to see you again with the white beards. Uh. Yeah, so. And thank you so much for the work that you do within our region um in Africa. Um but more importantly, I wanted to highlight um some of the few past things that they've done also within the local IXP's um within our region. I know you guys have worked very well with um Medallion and um Nigerian Internet Exchange Point and all of that. Um. So but more important, the reason why I'm trying to highlight some of these things is to rather say more congratulations to you guys and that we are still expecting that you get to do more work, right? Because um internet outage in Africa is on the rise as we speak. And a lot of election outside the the fiber cord and all of that. Uh the elections will also always come in Africa, and then there will be lots of shutdowns and all of that. So congratulations and continue with the good work. Thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you, Caleb. And we look forward, I mean, we we are very keen to do more and looking forward to to collaborate where the opportunity presents itself.
Marine.
Well, thank you. Yes, I'm I I think what they've been doing is is amazing. Um I was just actually sort of like looking at um, it's got chapters and policymakers. Uh these policies are locally developed policies. Who, well, they're not, are they board policies or?
I I think we mean government policies here. Am I right, Mituki?
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, government policies.
Right, okay, just cheeky.
Any other questions at this point, or should we move to the next part of the? Kelly?
Great, if we can progress to the next slide. Uh so I'm going to speak a bit about the work that the organization's been doing um to um strengthen and defend the internet. Um, ooh, is that me? Sorry. How's that? Is that better? Okay. No, but once it gets close to my laptop, I guess. Okay. Um, I I think it it won't come as a surprise to to any of you in this room um that um there's there's never been a more challenging uh period of time for um the open global internet around the world. The threats to the internet um continue to mount um all across the globe and um and and so it was important over the last five years that the Internet Society uh developed and strengthened its advocacy capacity um internally and also um across our global community. Uh and so I'm going to speak to um some of the work uh that we've been doing in that regard. Next slide, please. At the beginning of this period, um we were faced with um a bit of a dilemma. Uh we at the Internet Society thought we knew what uh good looked like when it came to um the internet, but could we actually explain that to other people? Uh so we spent a fair amount of time with um the staff and with our community um through consultations and the like, developing what we um called the internet way of networking. And what this was, was a resource um to describe what the necessary and sufficient conditions are for an open globally-connected, secure, and trustworthy internet. What did that actually mean? Um it's a lot of words. It's a it's a formal definition. But out of that work came something called the Internet Impact Assessment um and that and the framework that goes along with that. The Internet Impact Assessment Tool is um much like you would do an environmental impact assessment when you're when you're building a bridge somewhere. What is the impact of that going to be on the local ecology? Well, what we have promoted is that this is something that should be done when you're developing policy about the internet um that might touch on aspects of the internet. If you pause for a moment and use this tool, can you identify what the knock-on effects might be, intentional or unintentional? Um and that toolkit was um was published, um I think it was in two thousand gosh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, something like that. Um and that enabled us uh with our community um to publish internet impact briefs focused on specific policies. Um over the uh last five years, we published over twenty assessments. Uh many of those are done with partners on the ground. Um and we have some very notable examples, um for example, on the cost-sharing proposals in South Korea um and and proposals that we saw in India and Brazil. Um and so what we've been building, I think, from an advocacy perspective, is a foundation and then adding pieces to it as the as the environment has changed. Um we also did a policy development process on digital sovereignty. Um we see proposals um like this around the world that come in different forms. And we were able to articulate um what uh the the challenges were and what our approach to digital sovereignty would be. Um that goes into our toolkit, right, of of measures that we can use as we go out and do advocacy. Uh we also spent a lot of time, particularly um after um the war in Ukraine, where we where the world was really focused on this idea of internet fragmentation um and this concern that uh we were moving farther and farther away based on policy actions from a globally-connected internet into these these really um sovereign parts um that that had fundamental threats to um to the internet as we knew it. So we did a lot of work on that, and the board had a number of discussions on that topic as well. So if we could move um to the next slide. On the basis of that, we have really honed and sharpened our approach to global advocacy. And when I say our, I want to be clear, this is not just Internet Society staff. Uh we have worked very hard to join others, whether they be chapters, whether they be local partners, regional, global partners, to advocate uh for uh these principles that um that we think are so important for the internet. And unfortunately, it's it feels like a daily, a daily threat analysis, um rapid response. Um and and the tools that we use are different in different environments. Um just last uh the last couple of weeks, we um and I'll speak to this later, but uh rolled out the very first really bottom-up grassroots advocacy um work in Canada um um in response to the online harms work that they're doing there. Um and sometimes it's about letters and joining letters with other organizations. Um Andrew has testified um before Congress. Um there's there's just lots of tools we can use, and we have this solid foundation in the internet way of networking. And what you'll see here is, and you know, in the last five years, we've had um over forty government or policy statements um supporting encryption um and opposing fragmentation. Um a hundred open letters that we participated in or driven ourselves. And what that gives us is, we're trying to get the inroads into policymakers who start repeating the messages that we care about, right? Because ultimately, our goal is not the Internet Impact Assessment. It is actually good policy, right? That is what we are seeking. We are seeking to defend against bad policy and the implementation of policy that supports the global internet. It's also the case that five years ago, we did not have an amicus program. That was something that was developed in the last um five-year period. Um and in fact, we're giving a little shout out here to Alona because during her interview, she suggested that this was something that that ISA could in fact do and a place that we could contribute. Um there needs to be a voice for the internet in legal proceedings. There are a lot of decisions being handed down um in the courts that affect um the open globally-connected, secure, and trustworthy internet. We started that program um in the United States, in part because the US legal system is open to things like amicus filings by um by third parties. And we filed six amicus briefs in the United States in recent years. Um we're waiting every day to see if the Supreme Court issues a a decision um soon in one that we have that we have filed. And we are now at the in the at the point where we can expand this work to non-US um jurisdictions. And we filed um the first amicus brief outside the US in Mexico uh late last year. Um and so this is another area where we can defend the internet um in the policy arena. Next slide. The Global Encryption Coalition um is one that was mentioned earlier by our DC chapter, and we're thrilled that they're thinking of joining. That's fantastic. Um the encryption uh work was something we had um been doing for a while, but um we really focused, as you would have seen in that strategy, um to defend the internet against threats um to end-to-end encryption. And uh one of the things that that we quickly concluded was the Internet Society was not going to do this on its own. There was just no way we could be effective. And by standing up a coalition of partners all over the world, we can have global impact on this debate. And the coalition started with, you know, a few um organizations, the Center for Democracy and Technology, and and a few others who had this vision. And together, we have built a global coalition of over four hundred and twenty-four members in a hundred and five countries, many of which are ISOC chapters. And they are monitoring the landscape for threats to encryption. They are ready to act. They share resources and information. And um it is is really becoming the go-to place for um defending the internet um uh in support of encryption. And this is an example of, you know, multi-stakeholder partnership development and advocacy. Um we can't do it by ourselves. Um uh but um we have a lot of fellow travelers who believe in this cause. They are org org members, in some cases, companies. They are civil society groups, they are chapters, local volunteers, individual experts. Um and it's it's a it's a piece of work that we're really incredibly proud of. Next slide. Um another example of um sustainable models for impactful multi-stakeholder work is um our longstanding support for um routing security um and and the work we did to um develop um the the initiative mutually agreed norms for routing security. Um over ten years ago, a few ISOC staff and network operators um recognized um both a a problem and an opportunity um that the internet's routing plane had not been designed with uh security in mind. But there were methods and behaviors that if more people employed them could actually increase the security of the global routing system. Um what we didn't need was a a government mandate to do this. What we needed was um a a bottom-up collaborative effort um through norm setting to to reach agreements on what good would look like in terms of routing security. Um over the past ten years, we've built that um network of manners participants from three hundred to over a thousand participants. Um it is a thriving community of, as you see here, network operators, IXP's, CDN cloud providers, and equipment vendors all um agreeing that there are fundamental steps that need to be taken to improve routing security. Um we're really quite proud of the partnerships that we've developed through that, and um a key partnership, of course, is the Global Cyber Alliance. We entered into a a formal partnership last year um to ensure that manners had a sustainable path into the future to do the kind of work that that community wants to do to take that uh manners initiative to the next level. And GCA is a fantastic partner to enable them to do that. We at the Internet Society remain engaged in routing security. I think it's important for the trustees to to understand that. Um we work very closely with GCA, particularly on advocacy. So recent efforts in um, for example, um the US, where the FCC is considering um regulations on routing security. Um the the Internet Society and GCA have been active in reaching out to the FCC and other stakeholders to express our concerns um um for for the approach that was um being taken in the US. Um we expect to continue that dialogue with GCA into the future um and are really excited to see where that initiative um goes under under their stewardship. I think, is that it? Next slide? Nope, that was it. So are there any comments or questions on this portion of the twenty-five strategy?
Run.
Oh, Brian.
So Sally, this is probably just FYI more than anything else. Uh I had a couple of discussions with members of the FCC Advisory Council, and they specifically pointed at manners when they were developing their proposed proposals. So they are aware of what's going on. And one person basically said, we're going to make everybody do it. If if we can't have this small group of people doing it and nobody else playing along. So there there you have you have advocates on that committee. So take advantage of it if you can.
Uh Victor, then Caleb.
I chose the right conversation, but I'm going to comment towards you said, but that's not changing what's being done. It's more like just make it more globally, like make people do it as opposed to trying to influence what gets done, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Caleb?
Yeah, so on on the amicus brief and the policy uh push across board, um I think I've mentioned, I've mentioned this earlier on that I'd like to see that this is not just um something that you are pushing here in North America or some of the developed world, that there are lots of policies that are still ongoing in Africa and Asia and in other places that are, you need to pay attention, close attention to. And I used to tell most people um that um uh when we engage that, if you fail to participate in in um governance, you end up being governed by imbeciles, like Socrates said, right? Um so it's not like these guys don't know what it is. So I'll give you an example. Um you had like a policy stuff during the ITF for some of these policymakers, right? Very, very good initiative. I'd like to see that grow. Um but more importantly, I have not, I would rather say that when you call the politicians in the room, it's always good to call the civil servants also in the room. The the reason why I'm saying that is some of the advocacy work that I done earlier on is that the best way to get the senator to actually see reason with us when we are pushing an agenda, let's say, in the Nigerian Senate, is that we get staff involved, right? We let the staff who we do the internal follow-up and maybe if you understand what I mean by the lobbying, it all depends on what you guys call lobbying here in the US and the other type of lobbying we're doing Africa, right? But it's it's different terms. But it's about getting those people involved, the junior um civil servants. They are the ones that we end up convincing those politicians to get to fix these things. And they're the ones that we drafted. So somehow, because you have that level of influence with those civil servants, right? If you have your personal agenda and maybe as part of the lobbying, you've invited them for meeting, they've seen oh, we have the opportunity to engage with these people, here's their perspective, they will include that as well. Um. In one other part of my life that I've worked with an uh uh an academic um initiative research that we worked on, um even when, take for example, big cops like Google and Meta, they come to us and say, hey, um we know that we are funding your project, but we also have this agenda, right? So while you're doing this advocacy work, have to put this in some of your documentations that you use and that there are budgets that can also help you get this lower level of staff who will have the continuum in government when politicians change. Um the final one I wanted to say is judicial officers, right? So interpretations in the court of law could be subjected to different things. Right? So interpretations in the court of law could be subjected to different things. And if we have plans for the politicians, it's also good that we also have plans for the judicial officers that we end up interpreting some of the policy changes that we are trying to make changes to, that we end up going into like a legislation. And so if we want the judicial officers also to interpret it very well, it is good to also have some of those engagements with them, like those trainings and all of that, inviting them to some of these meetings and letting them understand the importance of it. A classic example that I will cite in Africa, which you guys are all aware of, is the Afrenic issue, right? I am pretty sure that if the judge understands the gravity of the case he's presiding on, right? I think Afrenic will be in a better place today. But perhaps because we don't have judicial officers understanding the basics and integrity of these things, we end up just, you know, going back to where we are. And I'm not saying we'll be governed by whoever, you know what I mean, but then it's something that we should try. I'm encouraging that we continue the growth on where we have started on this work. Thank you for the for the hard work and to your team.
Speaking of hard work, I I want to go back to the Global Encryption Coalition for a moment and say that is incredibly hard work. Building up a coalition of that size, especially one which is in opposition to a set of policies which are still considered controversial by way too many people is an incredible feat and seeing all of those blue dots across all of those places is an incredibly heartening thing to know that it's not just the work we've done directly, but it's the inspiration the staff has been to all of those other organizations and individuals in making the point that confidentiality and data integrity are critical aspects of people's daily lives. The the very idea that encryption is a safeguard is one of those revelations to people that they once they they come to it, they think they've always known it. And getting them both to the point to think they've always known it and then be willing to help others come to that point is an incredible piece of work and I really want to to highlight how much the the board and the community appreciates it.
I think I'll hand over to Sebastian now.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, afternoon, everyone. My name is Sebastian Belagamba. I'm the Vice President of External and Community Engagement of the Internet Society and I'm based in Montevideo, Uruguay, which is gray and frizzy as well. I mean, I don't know if I that bad as Nairobi for you, Michoche, but it is kind of rainy today here. And so I'm gonna try to introduce you to three different buckets of work that we have done since 2020 in this in this organization, which is the work that we do with our community in in general, considering our community, the individual members, chapters and and organization members. The work that we do in order to establish our advocacy as a long-term as a long-term strategy and and the commitment that we set to this organization in order to make our center a kind of a an advocacy organization, transform ourselves into into that in in this period of time and the successes that we had had in achieving that and how we manage the next generation of internet champions. I mean, how we train and support internet leaders across across the the board. If we can go to to the next slide, I can go into can can we switch this slide, please? Okay, thank you very much. Highlights for for the work that we do with our community. I I'd like to start this by saying, I mean, I mean, it is, I mean, I'm preaching to the to the choir here, but the importance of the community in the in this organization and always like to to remind us of the numbers and and the luxury that we have as an organization about to to have this this kind of our community. We have two one hundred and thirty-two thousand individual members in in the Internet Society, a hundred and thirty chapters or especially interest groups and eighty-three organization members. This is impressive for for any organization. And I think it's important for us to remind that because and that would that speaks a lot of of our organization and 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 I think it's important since this is such an important aspect of of the internet society because it makes the societal part of the of of our of our organization to to become true. This is something that we work a lot in order to 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 foster. I mean, how to support the the work of our community, the work of our chapters. Terrific work that our chapters do on the ground and 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 the way we engage with our organization members and 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 so forth. So since 2020, we in 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 order to make it to to make that even better, we put together several activities. We we concentrated on the governance, on the management aspect of the of of the community from the Internet Society staff standpoint, working together with our community and working together with our community through the the advisory council, the chapter advisory council and the organization member advisory council. For instance, we put together a a new way to structure our relationship with the chapter letters that we signed with our chapters. We revised the the chapter evaluation process. That is, again, I mean, both both things in close collaboration with our community itself in order to make it to to make it happen. In order to to promote and support the the splendid work that they do, we continue funding that work. I mean, in two different aspects. One is the the chapter admin funds that we give to every chapter in order to cover the basic, the risk cost of running a chapter, but most importantly, because this is results related, an impact related. We more than that, I mean, more than that, the 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 funds that we gave for programmatic activities to to chapters, both through Beyond the Net and the and the grants run by the foundation. They they had increased since 2021. In 2021 was six hundred thousand and five six hundred and five thousand US dollars and now it's around one point five million dollars in twenty in twenty twenty-three. We also are finishing the launch of the new association management system for for chapters and community to be better catered in in that front. We switched to Fontiva from the old Member Nova that we have. We are not there yet. I mean, we are in the middle of transition. Some things are not working as expected in in that front and we are I mean, put in a lot of effort in order to make them work, but in general, where when we finish the the transition, we're gonna be way better off than than we were before. And I think you can see the results coming out of of that. I mean, and and one thing that is a number that struck me as very, very relevant and important when when looking at this presentation is that in 2019, when we conducted the the chapter evaluations in twenty nineteen, only sixty-nine percent of our chapters were in good standing. Now we have eighty-nine percent as of twenty twenty-three, eighty-nine percent. A hundred and six of our chapters were in good with the standing. With eighty of this, one hundred and six being in the top tier of the of of the evaluation, that is, we call it GAB. So this is, I think it's a, I I think it's a very, a very impressive number and a very impressive feature for for that. In order to do that, I mean, we also we also want to encourage the participation of and and the interaction between not just with us, I mean, for our community, but also among them. And we launched one in in this two five years until until now, since we launched these these activities, we have tried with two different approaches to 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 that. We had until last year, what we call the Community Week. And Community Week was very good in many in many senses, put together many peoples in the same place, but was a challenge time-wise, time zone-wise and 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 in terms of the logistics involved to to in order to to run it. So we're trying a new a new approach this year, which is the Regional Community Days. But two of them already happened and has been proven successful so so far. So we will report on on that at the at the end of the of the year. For organization members, it's been a challenging period the since two thousand and twenty because those are mostly companies. The business environment has been rough one in 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 many in many ways through the pandemic. Some of our organization members were supporters of the IETF and the IETF LLC came into place in in that period of time and some of them went that way. I mean, instead of staying with the with the Internet Society in order to support the the IETF, we're working on very, I mean, a lot of we've been working these years in in many ways in order to get closer to to organization members and I hope we 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 achieve that. I mean, we are running constant roundtables with the with with the OMM in conjunction with the OMM, the organization members advisory council. And that is something that we will continue to. We are, we started also doing meet and greets in in relevant events with our organization members. So we want to establish a more closer relationship with our organization members. The second topic that I know is that I'm short of time, so I would speed up now. The if we can change the slide to the next one, please. Our advocacy has been referred by Sally in her presentation, but one thing that our teams are also doing is to provide a long-term house for for our advocacy efforts. We decided to become an advocacy organization or to strengthen our capabilities on on advocacy in the in in this planning period, in in this five years planning period, we are achieving that. Sally has provided a lot of examples of our our successes on on that field, but in order to make it happen and to to make it continuously, someone needs to be the depositary of that and repository of of that. So we are putting together ways in order to continue advocacy on on topics that are some former projects have addressed and to continue that and also to work with our community in order to make it happen. We, if we try to advocate just by ourselves and through the a hundred and something ISOC stuff that we have, we are not going to be affected. We we are a unique organization in which we have a national capillarity and we can engage at the national level with the with our chapters. So we we, in order to to preserve this this work, we also focused on providing a framework that is the internet way of networking, a methodology in order to respond to to threats to 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 that framework. We call it FAST, which is flag analyzed, strategized and 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 together and we act together. And that is open also to our community because we have also ways for people to flag threats and opportunities related to the internet, to the critical properties of the internet. And we had already connected this year more than twenty threats around the world that we are triaging and monitoring and and eventually engaging with it. So the final step in in that in in this front is that we also apply the the same advocacy advocacy principle to to our national engagement, but also the global and the regional and global one. And we are in in the in in these past years, we have been also ramping up the work that we do at the global level because of the different threats that we're seeing coming in the internet governance arena, for instance. And a testament of that is that the the launch of a UN, defending the internet in the UN project in in twenty twenty-four. The next slide, please. Finally, this is an important work that is actually led by Joyce O'Nee, my colleague Joyce O'Nee, and and has to do with supporting and and creating internet leaders, internet champions around the world, which is basically done through two different activities. One is the training and learning activity and the second one is fellowship. Since in in the fellowships arena since two thousand and twenty-one, we have launched four different new fellowships. One is called the Early Career Fellowship, the Mid-Career Fellowship. We had continued the Youth Ambassadors, but we revamped that that it used to be the Youth IGF Fellowship, now is 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 wider than just the the IGF, the Global IGF, so it's been revamped. And there is a new fellowship that is launched in in twenty twenty-four that is the Active Fellowship. In total, since since then, two hundred and twelve and eleven fellows have been awarded in between all the fellowship programs. And also it's important to note this, the launch of the new Alumni Network that has been established in twenty twenty-two. As of now, the network consists of three hundred and one alumni that are currently in in that database and this is former fellows and former trainees that that for instance, are providing mentorship to 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 new fellows and and new trainees as well. In the e-learning and training, we currently have seventeen different courses. Most of these courses are trilingual, meaning that they're run in English, Spanish and French. We have transitioned these all these courses into the into accessibility standards, the WTC accessibility standards. Almost nine thousand people has been given a certificate since two thousand and twenty-one in in our concerts and we are very much involved in our community in the Train the Trainer Program, which is the the it's becoming our partners and chapters are becoming trainers and and almost four hundred people has been trained through our Train the Trainer Program. With that, I would like to to conclude because we only have five minutes left to for for this session and I'd like to entertain, I mean, to have time to entertain comments or questions if there are any. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, Sebastian. Are there questions from?
In your closing, you cited that the seventeen courses had almost nine thousand people in twenty twenty-one. Is that the correct number? And if so, or correct year? And if so, what is the current number?
Since two thousand and twenty-one. Yeah.
Thank you.
I I really want to say that it's really heartening to see the new Alumni Network. That was something that the foundation has been doing with the grantees is to create these communities of folks who have been part of specific ISOC programs so that they can provide each other support. And it's really a wonderful way of scaling some of the efforts so that the folks that have been through the process before can help bring the new ones along. And I I do hope that as we continue to develop that kind of network, we can potentially start interconnecting them and inter-network our alumni networks in ways that allow them to to share their insights across them and and I think you you might need a little tiny bit more scale before you get there, but it's definitely something I I I'm hopeful for for the future. Sagarika?
Yeah. Thank you, Sebastian. It's your good work. And I have a small question. In in this side, it mentioned the accessibility updates on the online courses, online learning platform. But whenever we are trying to like encourage people with disabilities to learn, join into the the online courses, there is always complaints that they are not accessible. So what is the update on that?
I have the numbers, but it's 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 been done and and the let me see if I can find the numbers because I I know I noticed, I noted this somewhere, but if not, I I would I would follow up with you on offline with the with the right numbers, but I would say that by the end, it's, at this point, is seven.
Sebastian, I can take this one.
Yeah. Okay, please. Seven of them is are compliant at, at this moment. So yeah, please, go ahead.
Yeah. So in two thousand and twenty three, by the end of two thousand and twenty three, six of our training courses were reviewed and VPAT certified. We're working now to get certifications in, for the Internet Governance Course and the Digital Rights Encryption and Chapter Management Courses. So by the end of the year, we anticipate that nine out of our eighteen courses content will have certifications. So we're working through it steadily. Any new courses that are rolled out are fully accessible and we're going back and doing the retroactive updates. Every year we allocate budget for that.
Thank you, Sally.
And now that you mention, mention that, I found the number myself. Sorry for that.
Thank you very much, Sagrica. Are there other questions or interventions? Well, thank you again, Sebastian. It, it was a breakneck pace you went through, but tremendous amount of work that you are covering. Thank you very much for all of the work as well as for the presentation. The next item of business will be the review of the progress on the two thousand and twenty four action plan. Sally?
Great. So this is, as said in the agenda item, the update on our progress to date in the two thousand and twenty four action plan, which represents the last year of that five-year strategy that we just spoke about. This is the action plan that the board approved at the November board meeting. I will just say, part of the challenge of the AGM in June is that we have not actually closed the mid-year. So some of the, the data comes in, in July, after I've given the mid-year update. So that happens every year. But the great thing is, is that we have a lot of much more sophisticated tracking tools where we can see progress in real time. So it's not such a heavy lift to pull the data at this point. So here we go. There is, I should say, a very long presentation where you can go project by project and see progress against each success measure. I am not going to drag you through all of that. What I'm going to do is just provide the highlights. And if you have questions, please let me know. The, this is, I'm going to update you first on the work we're doing to advocate and defend the Internet around the world. We have a whole body of work called Countering Internet Threats. As you can see here, this is largely reactive, but not completely. We do some proactive advocacy here as well. And we are actively involved right now in advocacy efforts across the globe, including in the EU and Brazil, India, Canada, and the US. Some live examples that I've mentioned already, but had a, a very active Q two at the FCC around the Open Internet Order and the Proposals to Regulate BGP. We, on very short order, submitted a filing in that proceeding, met with the Commission, filed ex parte's and worked with a lot of local manners partners in the GCA. And we, we think we had an impact there and the initial result is a, a much more positive one in terms of recognizing manners and routing security than we think would have previously been the case if we had not intervened. But that is still ongoing and there's more work for us to do to engage with the FCC over the coming months. So that's, that's still a live, a live issue. And then second, the Canadian Online Harms Act, there's been a number, two different pieces of legislation that have been working their way through Canada. One of which actually was decent and on the basis of a lot of engagement and through the IETF policymakers program and otherwise, where the government itself, the Department of Heritage actually produced what was a fairly constructive piece of constructive proposal. But then shortly in the last couple of weeks, a, a more problematic version came out of the parliament and we, and it kind of went in without anybody noticing. And we were able to act very quickly with the chapters in Canada, some partners and otherwise to, I think, have an impact in slowing that piece of legislation down. We're not done yet. There's, there's still a threat there. But I think I can fairly say, right, Andrew, that three or four years ago, we would have not had that level of capability to respond that quickly. And so I, I think that's a result of the foundation that we've built. So that, that work is on track to achieve its goals this year. The work in the United Nations, as Sebastian mentioned, we have a full project dedicated to all the myriad of processes going on in the UN around Internet governance, whether it's the WISsis plus ten, Global Digital Compact, NetMundial plus ten, the World Telecommunications Standardization Assembly. There's just a lot going on over the next couple of years. And we're really building a, a solid partnership with other organizations. And here you see one of our staff members, Mona Kabala, speaking on behalf of ISOC at NetMundial, where we were, Sebastian was on the high-level committee and we were active participants. The extending encryption work, we continue to actually just recently engaging in Australia again on their e-safety standards, joining with Access Now and work there, also in the EU, some work in Q one and Q two on EIDIS. Or that was, that was quite concerning. Unfortunately, the UK Investigatory Powers Act, I cannot say that quickly, was, was a huge disappointment and quite, and quite threatening. And, and despite the hard work of, of ISOC and our, and our fantastic chapter in the UK that was adopted. We do have five out of the six pro encryption government statements. Our target was six this year. So we are well on track to achieve that. And really importantly, we have, we've started a, some work with child safety groups to try to get more advocates from that community for end-to-end encryption. It's been a hard project. This is not a community that's typically engaged in this kind of dialogue. And it's been new to us. We are not child safety experts. So this is a new community for us. But they are almost ready to release a joint document that can be the basis of effective advocacy. As many of you know, the child safety space is a really difficult and challenging one. We're dealing with vulnerable populations here and, and trying to do it in a way that promotes encryption as a tool of, of safety and privacy for young people. So this is also on track. In Q three and Q four, encryption really picks up with the Global Encryption Day and, and all of the advocacy that goes around that. So we'll see that in, in the Q three, Q four timeframe. Questions or comments here? Seeing none? Really? Okay. Next slide. This is, we're continuing here in our work to defend the Internet. I'm happy to say that the AMICUS program has achieved its goals for the year already, which is either good or bad. It just means that there was so much to do, that we had to do it quickly and early. But we, we submitted the two AMICUS briefs. These are a really heavy lift, I should say. So the number is small, but the, the work is, is large. And, and so we're on, we're definitely on track to achieve that, to achieve that goal. And then finally, we are the home for NDSS, the, the leading edge or leading security conference. We had a record number of in-person participants this year at six hundred and thirty-three. We also saw a decrease in sponsorships, which is largely industry churn. But, you know, that opens a question for us that we really need to think about to ensure that we can make this a sustainable activity. And that's, those are conversations that we're, we're having internally now. But being a supporter of cutting-edge security research is important to us in this kind of academic work. So we, we definitely have our eye on this. And you see here in the photo a post from one of the, the academic participants in the conference. It's always, you know, we always get great reviews for, for it. Comments or questions there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that I, I go to NDSS every year and it's a really great conference, symposium. Any other comments people want to make about that?
Caleb? Yep.
My general comment is, I noticed you mentioned Article nineteen, right? That means you guys collaborate on some of this advocacy work. So I'm looking at it that, yes, there are still other reputable advocacy organizations that some of their mission, not all per se, still aligns with ISOC. Are you looking at collaborating with them to expand this AMICUS program? So that, for me, I'd like to see more impact in the coming year that kind of goes deep into other regions outside the fact that you're providing advisory to the courts and other stuff. But I, I'm, I'm just saying that outside the chapters in the local community, right, it's, it's still good to look at other reputable ones. Some of their mission might not really align. But again, there's something to pick out from it. At least I'm aware, take for example, in my own path that we have like the Paradigm Initiative, who is also a grantee in ISOC Foundation, right now, they, they do a whole lot of stuff. And it's, 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 it's good to maybe collaborate more with folks like that and tell them, oh, this is straightjacket. This is what we are doing. And then there are certain letters that goes out. Also, we have like a net coalition, net rights coalition in Africa, right? There are some letters that go out that I participate in. But sometimes I don't see ISOC global participating. Probably the, the best I sometimes see is just maybe at the chapter level that they participate. And outside that, I also want to, I don't know if it's also something that you encourage chapters to maybe challenge certain laws in that are not strengthening or defending the Internet in that country. Take, for example, I know that there are, there are certain civil rights organizations that challenge laws. I just want, maybe take, for example, they are just seeking interpretation from the court, right? And saying, hey, this law was established. We want interpretation from the court. What is the court saying about this? And how can we maybe provide advice on some of these things? So it's just a suggestion to see how we can expand the program. This is absolutely fantastic work. It's commendable. But again, like they say, he who has done a good job deserves more work, right? So this is more work to you guys to do more work.
Thanks, Caleb. I, I, there's a lot in there that I, that I agree with. I would say that we, to your point, we have joined with other organizations in some of the briefs that we filed. So they're not singular ISOC filings. So we joined with EFF, Electronic Frontier Foundation, ACLU, and a couple of others in one of the filings. So we do have some experience in that. And you're right, not every organization does the same thing. That's, I mean, that wouldn't be useful. We all have different scopes and missions. And so where we are aligned with organizations, we are happy to join that. I think there's a lot of enthusiasm internally to expand this program. We started a little slow because we needed to see if we could do it, if we could have the kind of impact that, that you're speaking about. And we're starting to see that happen. So we are tracking alone cases in how many jurisdictions now? Do you know?
Seventeen?
Seventeen jurisdictions outside the US. So we're starting to, to make, to see opportunities certainly outside the US. So hopefully we'll get, continue to get better if we have, you know, the funding to do it. So yeah, thank you. Other comments? All right, let's keep going. Next slide. So this is the body of work we're doing to build the Internet and improve its resilience. You would have heard Michukey speak to a number of these things. We, the work we do to connect the unconnected. This is also known as our support for community networks, something we do in close partnership with the foundation and Sarah's team. And I think, as I mentioned in March, one of the changes we made last year was to shift the funding for community networks from the Internet Society to be administered by Sarah and her team. And we are now seeing the results of that start to come in, which is that we had a record number of community network grant applications. That's what we wanted. We wanted to ensure that our programs could scale. And that's what, that, that shift, that structural shift has, has resulted in. And so this target, I'm happy to say, has been achieved and actually exceeded for the year. We had plans to support six community networks and we were able to support ten already this year through funding. We are also developing right now the policy and advocacy toolkit for community networks. Again, this is part of our effort to create more off-the-shelf resources for communities that want to connect themselves. The challenge for many of them is that the policy and regulatory environment is not conducive for community networks. You need access to spectrum. You need regulations to allow this kind of connectivity approach to, to be deployed. And so the team right now is developing this toolkit with the community so that it meets their needs and so that they are able to do the kind of local advocacy that would make this successful. This photo here is a picture of, of an idea board that was developed at the CTELL meeting, which is the Inter-American Commission, which is governments. And we had a number of governments in the workshop who were giving us input on the kinds of policy advocacy that would be effective and work well to, to support community networks. So that was really quite exciting. They didn't have to come to this meeting and we had a lot of participation at the CTELL meeting to get this toolkit right. So that's on track. For peering infrastructure, again, this is work that grants that we, that Sarah's team administers. And we are on track to fund one new IXP and support five existing IXP's. I'm happy to say that we have, you know, through the funding from Meta, it's possible that we may be able to do more in this area. And so we're evaluating what that looks like for the back half of the year. As, as Michukey highlighted earlier, and I won't belabor this, but the, the West Africa submarine cable outage was obviously really challenging for thirteen countries in Africa. It was also a moment where the technical communities that we had been participating in and trying to support came together to support the Internet in that region. And the Internet exchange points kept those communities online when the connections were cut to the global networks. And so that was a moment to really see over a decade of work, support resiliency in that region. Measuring the Internet, we are focused this year on improving the, the user experience through some redesign, stronger accessibility and other, and other work that's happening. Partly because, as Michukey said, five years ago, Pulse did not exist. This was an idea. We built it. It, it was, you know, well-received. And now we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community about ways to make it more user-friendly and ways that it would meet the, the needs of, of the people that we want to reach through this tool. And so that work is happening and it's on pace and we're, we're doing, you know, slow rollouts throughout the year of updates there. I was able to announce yesterday that the IXP tracker and Pulse fifty fifty piece went up. So it's not the end of June. It's already been released. And there'll be more releases around fifty fifty. But the ability to measure whether the, 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 the steps we're taking through supporting IXP's and what are, are actually improving resiliency and affordability is really important. So fifty fifty tool is, is important for us, for our own planning, but also is a way to demonstrate to governments the resiliency and affordability of network infrastructure in their countries. And then finally, we're seeing And then finally, we're seeing, we're well on track. I think actually ahead of schedule is what the team reported to me in terms of references to Pulse and they're past that mid-year target. Any questions? Okay. Next slide. Finally, all of this is possible because of the community, right? This is not, we can't do any of this work with just Internet Society staff. As Sebastian pointed out, we are a society, right? That was the vision, that out of the internet, a society would emerge. And that is the Internet Society. We're diverse, we're global, lots of different expertise, lots of areas of focus and development. And, and part of our role as staff is to support that community. We have invested a lot this year in mobilizing our community and ensuring that they have the tools that they need to do the kind of advocacy that's needed on the ground. We're really quite proud of the advocacy we're seeing out of our chapters around the world. And I highlighted some chapters there and the stories come through all the time. Our internal Slack channel is quite active with, with the stories coming in from, from chapters and community members. We have an 89% chapter evaluation rate. That, that rate is important because that is a set of criteria that were developed with the chapter community that they are evaluated on each year. That then helps determine the funding that they are eligible to receive, the grants that they can apply for. So a healthy and robust chapter has, has the ability to, to receive the beyond the net funding and other kinds of funding to do and implement local activities. So we have an 89% baseline from the evaluations that were performed late last year. And the, the, the next round of evaluations will happen at the end of this year. And of course, we continue to try to improve the organization member experience. And a number of you have provided inputs on that. And trying different things to try to find ways to engage what is actually a quite diverse set of org members with diverse interests. We are, obviously, we continue to run a number of awards programs. And I just want to do a quick note that the call for the Postel Award is currently open. So if you have any people that you think should be recognized through the Postel Award, we would really welcome those submissions. And one of the things we are trying to do better, and it links to the alumni, is, is engage those internet pioneers in our advocacy and in, in the work that we do. To the extent that they're interested and want to do that, they are internet leaders and champions in different ways. And we would like to, to do better at reaching out to them. We will run the IETF policymakers program in Vancouver. So I don't have any updates on that yet, but it is well on track to be executed. And we will, of course, do that again in Dublin at the IETF. And finally, let's see, I have the numbers from Christian. I think we're looking at about 10 this time. Let's, oh, you have it open? Let's see, we have 10 participants from six countries.
I also have a question from Caleb. If you want to take it?
I can take it, sorry. Go ahead.
So you were speaking about the growth for the OMAC, which is something I think we've talked about here. And I think Ramona has been one of the champions about lowering the criteria so that you can have a different set of membership that can join. And they have to look at what exactly is the gain for them to join. So I'll give you an example. I think that argument, we, not really an argument, we're having that conversation on the mailing list at some point in time where we said organizational members, they have to pay certain fees and all of that. Now, the truth of the matter is, see, I come from Africa. Respectfully, maybe I'm just over advocating for Africa this time around. There are a lot of startups and there are a lot of organizations who have the same aligned mission and can also help project the work we are doing. They are not where they are supposed to be right now, but they also have something that they are doing related to internet technology. So what's my ask is that we need to expand the OMAC, right? And why am I requesting that we expand the OMAC is about, you know, making the criteria for some people who cannot afford that fee? Because I think you were saying that there is certain amount of money that $300 or something, I'm not sure.
So just to, just to confirm my understanding, you're advocating that we consider changing the fee structure for OMAC membership?
Yes, something like that, but maybe for lack of a better word, I would, I would, I would use.
So let me, let me just suggest that we hear the report first and finish the reporting aspect. And then possibly we can take that discussion during the closed observer sessions and link it to the finance presentation that's next. Because I think it might be better taken at that point in the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see, where was it? Okay, the last slide, which I will probably move to, yeah. The, we, we are continuing the work on internet leadership development, right? Through our foundations that Sebastian described and, and the online learning. One of the things that we learned from some experience that we had in Kenya was that, you know, clearly, training people 25 people at a time was not going to meet the high demand that we were seeing for online skills. So the model needed to change. We also saw that through a pilot that we had in Kenya, we actually found that 80% of the people that went through that training found employment in the sector after an internship. So there is a link there between the training and people's lives fundamentally, right? And so we wanted that to grow and it wasn't going to grow 25 people at a time with, you know, with staff resources. So we have engaged in an approach of, you know, the train the trainer. This is not revolutionary, but it's, it's actually being quite successful. And what you see here is a photo of the graduation. I'm reading this from Joyce, the third cohort of trainers across Zimbabwe from institutions like the Zimbabwe Open University, Solusi University and the National University of Science and Technology. Between 2022 and 2024, 90 trainers have trained over 3,000 students across 30 institutions in Zimbabwe. So this is how we're starting to see scale of these programs. What's fantastic is that this is our chapter, right? These are our chapter members that have seen this opportunity. And, and through working with Joyce and her team are really starting to see results. Interestingly, they have now gone on to build, out of Solusi University, they figured out, after having gone through the training, that they could connect the primary school through wireless connectivity and now have a computer lab in the school. And, and so what you see here is a photo of Joyce on the right, meeting with, with that community. And we're now seeking to duplicate that model in Colombia and in India. With India, we're able to work with the seven chapters, who will identify the trainees who can then go on to do these Train the Trainer programs. And so this is, I think, an exciting moment for the training program. And as we head into the 2030 strategy, we now have a model that can be replicated across the chapters. So I wanted to highlight that here. For our, our general empowerment programs, the area of focus for us is the alumni, right? It's this idea, and some of you might have been around, but at the beginning, about five years ago, we had some work done to redesign our fellowship and training programs. And the key that came from board consultations and community and others was, it wasn't just about training people. It was about building leaders who would be on the front lines of building and defending the internet in their communities. And so with, you know, well-run fellowship programs and training programs in place, we are in the position now to focus on cultivating those alumni, keeping them engaged with ISOC, finding opportunities for them to keep engaged in the work that we care about. So that alumni program is developing and there's a new staff person on board that's focused on that. And so I think we're, we're well positioned for that work. So I think that's it. So all in all, I can say that having looked at the action plan and looked at the success measures that we are tracking, we are on track to achieve those for the year and within budget. And I don't see areas right now that are at risk. Thank you.
Are there any questions? As you say, it's always great to see the goals for the year being met so early. And it's also given that so many of our goals around defending against threats, a little bit scary to see that our Amicus and other goals have been met so early because there are so many things to do. But it certainly seems like the work is proceeding apace. And thank you very much for the report. Our next, oh, sorry, Charles.
Yeah, very quickly. Can we have something like a quick video or something to show all these accomplishments of the year? So we can use them for, you know, yeah, telling us about the good work that has been done. You know, especially while we're thinking about, you know, this gap of letting people know what we are doing so that they should support us, including donations?
I think that's music to Chris's ears.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, is the answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. If I could tack on like short ones is what gets, you probably know this already, is what gets traction. And on each individual thing, so we can all amplify it and with the QR code, perfect. Thank you. Be great.
Yeah, it's, it's day six of the job. So I'm wary of, of, you know, making claims and talking too much about the strategy for the combined foundation group. But fundamentally, yes. And I think looking at the work in the year so far and the progress of the programs, not just within the remit of the foundation, but looking across all of the comms areas, this helps fundraising. This helps, you know, get the notion of the work that the Internet Society does out there. It helps them when it comes to the engagement in the Amicus brief works. You know, we should get to the point where through our comms work, people are naturally coming to us for this information and these kinds of stories. And we're not having to do outreach. We're having to manage the communities that we build of our content that really promote the work of the society and support all of the work that we do. So the very short answer is yes, but we've already been discussing that.
Thank you very much. I think we go into closed executive session now. So for those who are observing the session, thank you very much for your attendance. And we will return to open session later in the day to hear the report of the check. But for the moment, we will stop the recording.
That looks frozen to me.
No, she's moving.
I'm moving. It's me in real life.
We can hear you now, great. It's lovely to see you. We're just having people take their seats. We have, I think, Quorum to go ahead and start your report whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. All right. I'm assuming you've all had the opportunity to read our very brief report from the chapter's advisory council for this current quarter. My name's Cheryl Engdonore. I've got the pleasure of leading the team again this year along with Hiba Saad and Greg Shatton as both the vice chair and secretary. We've got on your screen in front of you, the current committee, just in case you've forgotten about us. Of course, I'm sure you haven't. On the first page of today's report, you will find the usual boring admin trivia that tells you how we've been meeting, when we've been meeting, what we've been meeting about, links to those agendas and all the gory details, should you want to dig into those. Excuse me. On the end of the first page, however, is a little continuing matter. One that I do know that previous Board of Trustees meetings has been concerned about. And that's with the regard to how many of our chapters have actually appointed representatives to the check. This is still something that needs addressing. We have, for example, since the last quarter, encouraged our chat committee to work with their regional engagement teams and to see if we can encourage our chapters in those quarterly or regular meetings that those regions hold, to give a little space for us to talk to the chapters and help them understand why it is important that they put forward a representative and indeed that that representative appears in the quarterly meetings and interacts with us. I'd like to say that we've had success, but if you go to the next page, the top of the next page, you'll see the statistics, which are painfully flat, actually. As you can see, we've got, in fact, a small, pardon me while I clear my throat, a small increase of the number of representatives that did join us for our quarterly call. But what we have had, fortunately, is a little drop, which may be artifact in terms of the total number of representatives appointed. Why we think this might be a little bit of an artifact is that they have this annual refreshing that goes on. Not everybody remembers as they're changing leadership within their chapter to update. And there's also the transitions onto new systems, et cetera. So we'll be working in this, beginning of this next quarter to see if we can tidy up those statistics. And for those of you who've either looked at the previous reports from the annual report in particular from last year or have shared these updates with us before, we will also look at some comparative year-by-year statistics as well. Now, I'm happy to stop here and take any questions on that particular item, because it has been something that's the Board of Trustees has been concerned with before, before I move on to the second part of our report.
Are there any questions? It looks like there aren't any questions on it at this moment. So why don't you go on?
Thanks. So the Board of Trustees is equally depressed as we are on all of this. Well, that's very sad. Let's see if we can do better, give some sort of rationale for people to get more engaged in the check. All right, Ben. If we move now on to something that is much more formal business, you'll find in our reply, I'm sorry, our review, I should say, of our last full chapter meeting, that was, we were delighted to have Ted and a couple of other of the Board of Trustees members join us. We did have a run-through of the 2030 strategy. And that's something that I believe this year's, at least steering committee, is keen to continue to not only have the very valued and valuable in terms of sharing of information and Q and A sessions, staff updates during our quarterly calls. But if there is anything that the Board of Trustees would like to have the opportunity to discuss with us and to, of course, in this case, present an outline, we certainly always welcome consideration of inviting you along to join us for various agenda items. We also have our regular AMS update, which wasn't particularly texting or vexing this time. We've usually had a lot more issues raised in the past. This, this last one, I don't think Christine had to fear too many difficult questions at all. And I think that's part of the general bedding in and getting used to the systems that we're occurring. We will leave this, however, on our agenda, because as we do realize, there is still a lot of learnings going on. And indeed, a lot of rolling out of additional, dare I say, benefits. and indeed a lot of rolling out of additional um uh, dare I say, benefits um and updates uh from the portal. One of the things that still, I suppose, is uh an issue raised by a number of our chapters, however, is the flexibility of the communication system, and that's with the being able to do the bespoke uh subject matter, et cetera, so that we know is work in progress. Um, we certainly do look forward to seeing that happen. In our meeting, however, we did have a very important and quite formal activity. Um, in the uh month prior uh to our uh our meeting, we had a uh representation from the Puerto Rican chapter. If you can just uh scroll up slightly to the uh that part of the page there. Perfect. Thank you. Um, the Puerto Rican chapter uh wrote uh formally to the uh check steering committee requesting that we undertake the, under our rules of procedure, uh the necessary processes um to seek a consensus for a formal request, which of course activates a response from the board, should we get the consensus for this formal request to come through to you regarding two matters. Now, these matters are separate, but they have been uh presented um at the same time and our uh polling of the chapter representatives um has gone out at the same time, but these are in fact two discrete issues. The first one is in fact one that has been um visited previously, um but seems to have uh um had a a desire um to be raised again, and that is uh to open up um the chapter delegates mailing list. Um, we had a full frank and somewhat fearless discussion um about um chapter delegate mailing list, its purposes and where the uh benefits are for um transparency. Um, if you can just scroll up a little bit further um to the survey, survey monkey questions, a little bit, tiny bit more, there should be a link. That's for perfect there. Just that's fine. Um, in the material that we sent out, um, not only did we have uh the opportunity for the Puerto Rican chapter in our last quarterly meeting to present to the representatives um their concerns and appeal um to the representatives of the check um to consider how they should be voting on this matter. Um, we've also in made sure we included um material, background material, um including um the previous activities which were discussed. Um, and I should note that previously, when this came up, um, it was not supported to open up um the delegate email list um more widely, but we shall see on the first of July um what the current uh lie of the land is from our uh now serving chapter representatives. The second matter, which I think you'll probably all be a little bit more familiar with um as something that is uh of concern um and that is based, of course, on mailing list um activity, is a proposed, yet to be confirmed, proposed uh request to reinstate uh funding of ISOC Live. Um, here, uh, I'm not going to need to go into the background of uh of that, that we've, we've certainly seen and watched um the interchange on the um e- email mailing list regarding the rationale as to why the Board of Trustees uh supported and decided uh to not continue um supporting funding of uh this particular work. Uh, but it is a matter of considerable concern um to many of our chapters, and we will find out shortly whether um that is a significant volume of our chapters to have a formal request returned to you on this matter. Um, with that, uh, should we uh discover that, um, well, regardless, let me start that sentence again. Regardless of the outcome of the poll, um, we will be transmitting the results of the poll um in a uh additional letter to the Board of Trustees as soon as it is available. Um, the survey monkey questions are there for your information um and for our transparency. Um, and uh we've taken the time in today's um update just to appraise you of what is going on and to hopefully allow you to prepare what may or may not be um the requirement of some form of formal reply on one or both of these matters. And with that, um, that's it for this quarter. Over to you for any questions.
Well, thank you very much uh for uh the the report and the presentation of the report. Uh, both are much appreciated. Uh, I do have one quick question before I turn over, see, there's, uh, and that's, uh, I'm ever interested in voting mechanics. Uh, if you could describe in kind of a short uh couple of sentences uh for the uh the two survey monkey um polls being conducted now, uh, whether the the vote is uh determined by uh the pool of people who choose to respond or uh as or or with reference to uh the total number of permitted respondents. Uh, I would be curious to know the the answer.
It it is in fact a very formal approach. Once we have a um a formal request, which the Puerto Rican chapter did send in writing, uh, we are required, in fact, to take the uh second of those two options, um, and that is, we will need a majority. Um, if not, I think if memory serves, it could even be a super majority of those able to vote to be in support of the poll questions for it to trigger the formal advice status.
Uh, thank you very much for uh that response. Uh, are there other questions for Cheryl? Uh, Caleb.
Really, it's it's not a question for Cheryl, but to, in a way, support the uh the second proposal um from the check um to lend my own voice of support for that proposal and uh that the ISOC Live um should be restored. Perhaps we can explore several ways of working around this, maybe one, adding it under the ISOC Foundation as um an internet history project. Um, or whatever means that we can even just get that because this is a a a strong request from the chapters, and I believe that we should take it more seriously uh beyond um just the mailing list exchanges and logical reasons from every party that is involved. Right? This is what the community says they want. And so if the community says they want this, this is a community-driven organization. We work it out and then we try and satisfy everyone um across board. Um, looking at the cost implication, I was made aware through back channels, just asking a few questions to understand that um annually it doesn't take beyond sixty thousand um for for that contract to old. Um, maybe a suggestion based on other things that has been said behind the scene internally in the board is to see that if you want a specific control over those assets and you want something, let's renegotiate the contract. But then everyone says they want that service restored because it's proving to support the chapter and the community. So for me, I will put all my weight behind this. And I'd like to openly let everyone know where I stand on this, that I am supporting this strongly um to restore that service back to the community. Thanks.
On the second proposal. Point of the agenda we're at is, are there questions for Cheryl? And we'll return to the other issues later. Are there questions for Cheryl? Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to um wrap up on that particular second point, um, the chapters um are also keen, um, and it's not written in the report, but it has been a part of mail exchange. Um, I'm not cut for life, and they remember whether with their direct mails or to the delegate list. But certainly in recent mail exchange, there has been concern, uh particularly out of the UK chapter, but not limited to that chapter, um, that we remind the Board of Trustees that the very generous support for ISOC Live um that is currently undertaken um will run out in August this year. So there is a timeframe um that the chapters certainly would want me to uh raise um to your attention. And with that, that's it for me then. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and uh the board will look forward to uh receiving the results of the poll. Uh, I believe you said it closed July first?
It will indeed.
All right, uh, so not long to wait now. Um, uh, thank you very much, and that will tell us uh something about the extent of community concern about this issue uh for any future discussions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll take my leave now, if you may. Thank you.
Okay, uh. Is there any other business for the good of the order? Seeing none? Oh, Caleb.
I wouldn't know. Maybe I'm the one, I'm just the only person, but there seemed to be a deflection from the ISOC Live proposal, and we don't want to have a conversation about it.
Well, we, we've had several conversations about it, and we're now waiting to see what the check poll returns. We're, we're part of a formal process now that has not complete. Uh, the ISOC um chapter in Puerto Rico has sent a formal request to the check. The check has responded by opening these polls, and the result of those polls will be transmitted to the board, and that's the point at which the board will have new data. Up until that point, we would be rerunning a set of conversations that have already been held. So I think at this point, the right thing to do is, the community is undergoing a process to poll itself to give us uh a response on this issue. I think we would respond once the poll is complete.
Okay. Well, if I think I read, I understand a a little bit of the check processes, but if I think I read that document properly, what I read there was, there was a formal, there will be a formal vote to open the chapter delegate list. That is the focus of that, and the second proposal was not vote-based.
Now, there are two proposals. They are unrelated. The polls are going on concurrently. The first is about the the chapter delegate list being opened. As she noted, that has been brooded before and turned down before, but it's been raised again. So that's item, poll one, item one. The second was the request from the Puerto Rico chapter to ask the check uh to send a formal request for reconsideration to the board. The check has opened a poll for that. That will close on July first, and the results of that will be transmitted to us along potentially if the, if the poll justifies it uh with that request for reconsideration. But at this point, we don't have the data that the the process the check has started is meant to gather.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, with that, I believe we are adjourned uh for the day. We will return tomorrow um as the internet's.
I think we need to approve the dates.
Oh, sorry, so far. We, we went through all that trouble uh to to get the 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 dates up and I got can uh I got anxious to go lie down for ten, ten seconds before the the rest of the evening. Uh, my apologies, uh, to all. This is the resolution to approve the dates and locations for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five board meetings uh based on the discussions that were held earlier today. Uh, it reads resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the following dates for its meetings in twenty twenty-four, provided it remains practical to travel and meet in the determined locations. Uh, the retreat being twenty eighth to twenty ninth September, Reston, Virginia, USA. The Q four meeting being the second and third of November in Dublin, Ireland. The first quarter meeting being the sixth and seventh of March in Seattle, Washington, USA, and the annual general meeting in thirteenth and fourteenth of June in Prague, Chechnya. Um, so uh may I ask someone to move the motion? Uh, I saw Brian and Victor. Is there any discussion of the motion? Uh, hearing no discussion, uh, uh, would all those in favor please signify by raising their hand? I believe that's unanimous. Uh, thank you very much uh for your attention to this matter and for the uh discussion uh that led to this result. Uh, and thank you again to Lauren for reminding me not to close the meeting without actually setting this uh down. Uh, and with that, one more time, is there anything else for the good of the order? Okay. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.